Good evening and welcome to Richmond Public Schools School Board Meeting, Monday, March first, two thousand and twenty-one. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. This meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with Richmond City Council Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash zero nine three, adopted April ninth, two thousand and twenty, and extended by Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash one eight three, adopted August twentieth, two thousand and twenty, and by Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty dash two three two, adopted December the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and the school board's resolution approved on April twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Simultaneous translation is being provided tonight in Spanish via Zoom, and the meeting notice contained information on how individuals needing translation services could obtain the service. The meeting notice also stated that the meeting would be a virtual meeting and would be live streamed for the public on the school division's Facebook page, and the link was provided. The meeting notice indicated that the board would not receive public comments in person. However, public comments can be submitted to the school board clerk, and an email address for comments was provided. The agenda of the meeting was posted onto Board Docs. At the roll call, we will state how many board members are participating at the time of roll call. Mrs. Elizabeth Door?
Here.
Mrs. Mariah White?
Present.
Ms. Kenya Gibson?
Here.
Mr. Jonathan Young?
Present.
Mrs. Stephanie Rizzi?
Here.
Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Mrs. Cheryl L. Burke?
Here.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Here.
And Ms. Nicole Jones?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have nine board members participating at this time.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Collins. All right, the next item on our agenda, adoption of the agenda. May I please get a motion? Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, madam, madam chair. Good evening, everyone. I move that we adopt the March the first, two thousand and twenty-one agenda.
Is there a second? Dawn Page, Ms. Page?
Second.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed motioned, Mrs. Page second, that we do receive the agenda as written. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Kenya Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Ms. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Gibson. Excuse me, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you very much. As we move forward with our agenda, we have a student representative, Mr. Camus.
Before I introduce our student representative, I just wanted to welcome back Dr. Harris from maternity leave. We are so thrilled to have her back, as I'm sure the school board and all of RPS is. So I just want to say, welcome, Dr. Harris. And I also wanted to introduce Alana Gonzalez, our new chief operating officer coming to us from New York. Alana, do you want to say just a few words?
Sure. Hi, Madam Chair and Vice Chair. I'm so happy to be here and work on this team and, and work with all of you.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you.
All right, now I will turn to our student of the month, Ms. Serenity McCand. Serenity is a senior at George With High School. She's also currently enrolled in the J. Sergeant Reynolds Early College Academy and will graduate high school this June with an associate's degree. She maintains a four-point-oh GPA, and her academic achievements include Dean's List and membership in the Phi Theta Kappa International Honor Society. In addition to serving on the superintendent's Student Advisory Council, Serenity operates her own business, Sweets by Ren, which specializes in desserts and baked goods. Accepted to nine colleges and universities, Serenity plans to attend Howard University this fall, majoring in psychology, and she hopes to pursue a career as a psychologist. School Board, it gives me great honor to introduce you to Serenity McCand.
All right, Serenity, okay, there you are. Would you like to make any remarks? First of all, congratulations, nine colleges, and you chose HU. Excellent, excellent, congratulations. Please, do you have any remarks you'd like to make?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to serve as a student representative. It is a pleasure that I'm able to join the board this evening and learn more about the board process. This evening, I would like to talk to you about virtual learning and the completion of science. Has COVID-nineteen impacted us in a tremendous way, and we transitioned to virtual learning? I could say, as a student, it has been hard. Learning without physically in school with my teachers, classmates, and friends is a hard concept, to say the least, especially a subject that are more hands-on like math. I understand that virtual learning is something we cannot change, which is safety being our top priority for me sometimes, and I know that teachers have had extreme adjustments, but I feel that the concepts we are learning are being rushed, and we're not retaining the information. But I cannot speak for all students. I often have assignments that are due a day after we learn material. Therefore, we're not giving time to retain it, and basically, we're just completing assignments for the sake of a grade. It will be, I would greatly appreciate it if the administration would take into consideration extension of deadlines for assignments, so that students have more time to process material before completing the assignment. Thank you again for adding me with that opportunity to express myself as a student and be a part of this meeting.
Mr. Camus?
Thank you so much, Serenity. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your words, and we'll certainly take a look at some of the things that you raised, and most of all, are just thrilled that you'll be going on to Howard University and becoming a psychologist. So, once you are done, please don't forget us, because we are always hiring psychologists, and we would love to have you come back home here to RPS.
Thank you.
Again, Serenity, thank you so much, and know that we are very proud of you. You have really be a high school senior with a four-point-oh grade point average, and it's true, it's very evident that academics is first in your life. So, thank you to you and your family members for their support, and we did hear your message well. Thank you. All right, as we move along, the next item on the agenda, two-point-zero-two, proclamation for National School Social Work Week. Mr. Camus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to now read our proclamation for National School Social Work Week. Whereas, National School Social Work Week is an opportunity to celebrate RPS social workers and acknowledge their role in providing mental, social, and emotional support and resources that enable our students to achieve success in school and beyond. And whereas, the social work profession, including RPS social workers, works to strengthen the well-being and meet the basic needs of all people, especially those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and living in poverty. And whereas, RPS social workers contribute to the achievement of every student by acknowledging and affirming their unique gifts and abilities to learn, while challenging the social and economic inequities that can prevent students from reaching their full potential. And whereas, social workers work collaboratively with families to find ways to further the educational, personal and, personal and social emotional growth of their children, and navigate families to community resources to support and enrich them. And whereas, RPS social workers have served with love in helping our students and families adapt to the virtual learning environment and all the other new pressures brought into their lives due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions to our students and families made by RPS social workers, the school board of the city of Richmond joins School Social Work Association of America in recognizing the week of March seventh through thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a School Social Work Week, and encourages all schools and community members to join in celebrating and supporting RPS social workers. And on behalf of RPS, I want to thank all of our social workers, and to anyone listening tonight, please don't hesitate to send in shout-outs for your social workers. We'd like to recognize them in as many ways as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camus, and thank you, on behalf of the board, to all of our social workers that work for Richmond Public Schools in the city and beyond. We thank you. We thank you for all that you continue to do for our students and our families. Thank you so much. Couldn't do it without you. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're ready for number three, public information. Ms. Collins, who's reading tonight, and who's keeping the time?
Ms. Lily will be reading, and I will be keeping time, Madam Chair.
All right, and colleagues, two minutes, no more than two hours. We're in agreement? Please proceed. Ms. Lily?
Yes. Rachel Nielsen, "It is overwhelming to think about the task ahead of us to safely..."
"We have been started in la tarea."
Okay, Pat, we're getting, we're hearing you as well?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, somehow I need to be let in on the Spanish channel.
Okay, Ali?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ali, are we straight? Okay, we're ready.
All right.
Let's see, Ms. Lily?
I'll start this one again. Rachel Nielsen?
Rachel Nielsen?
Yes.
I don't think we're straight yet.
No, I don't think so either. I'm sorry.
Oh, I saw at the bottom of the screen, it said, I thought it said it was straight. Let me go back and look at the chat again. Um, okey-dokey.
Is it possible, perhaps, for Mr. Spalding to begin and tag team the other direction while we get Pam squared away?
Mrs. Spalding, does that work for you? Okay, all right, Pat, we'll keep working with, is it Pat or Pam?
Pam.
Pam, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, Mrs. Spalding, Rudy? All right, let's continue. Let's try it again.
Rachel Nielsen, "It is overwhelming to think about the task ahead of us to safely open schools this fall. It is very confusing why the administration is solely focused on an overhaul of the calendar that will dramatically impact students, families, teachers, and staff instead of other creative solutions to address pandemic-related learning loss within the current calendar. A year-round school calendar is not the only way to address this loss. D.C. schools have decided to do the following to address this critical need: provide additional in-person and virtual instruction during the summer and fall to students who have fallen behind the most during the pandemic. One-third of the population is targeted. One-on-one or small-group tutoring, ten percent of the school system's fifty-two thousand students. D.C. school's website is below. The reopening video is awesome and must be reassuring to those, to the communities they serve. If year-round school is the right solution for RPS's student population, let's ensure comprehensive community engagement can occur, and appropriate planning can be done to manage all of the moving pieces well. I cannot imagine dividing your focus between the planning and impact of a massive change in the school calendar and all of the critical decisions yet to be made to get back to school safely. Can we please prioritize the priorities and develop a plan for fall? Reward hard-working teachers. The vast majority of teachers do not want or need this upheaval this year. We cannot afford to add teacher recruitment to the list of challenges for a safe reopening this fall. Welcome our students and staff with environments ready for them."
Time.
Mamie Taylor, "I am writing to extend my full support for year-round school. I understand that one of the most difficult things to wrap our heads around is change. However, oftentimes, change is necessary and, more importantly, inevitable. Ninety percent of our student population are children of color, and accordingly, there is an achievement gap with their peers that cannot be denied. Being proactive to level the playing field is also necessary and must be prioritized above our comfort levels. There are great benefits to shorter breaks for children in my community and city. For low-income students, especially those who regularly lose much of their literacy development during the three months of summer, year-round schooling can be quite beneficial. When teachers are required to be on campus year-round, struggling students, who lose about twenty-seven percent of learning gains over the summer, have access to regular tutoring and support they otherwise would not have in the summer months. Shorter breaks between school terms means that students are able to avoid gaps in learning, saving money on school facilities and staff resources, reducing class sizes and overcrowding in classrooms, alleviating the need for new school construction, preventing student and teacher burnout, decreasing teacher and student absences, increasing opportunities for extra help and studying. Our children need this change, especially as we are in the midst of a pandemic, which is life-altering, with an impact that more than likely will transcend generations. Students within Richmond Public Schools have encountered..."
Time.
Cynthia Danoska, I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. "I am writing to urge the board and administration to focus on safely reopening schools and learning all about the COVID protocols that need to be in place for that to occur. I am concerned that there are not specific plans being put in place. The board is not asking critical questions of the administration, and money is not being allocated. It is time for administration to present their plan for reopening schools in detail. Instead of folk, instead, the focus is on changing the school calendar for next year and incorporating intercessions. In order to keep schools open, according to COVID protocols, pods of students should not be mixed. Creating intercessions, as proposed, does just that. To group students differently than they are during regular school days increases exposure and jeopardizes whole-grade and schools in-person instruction. This is the reason many middle schools and high schools have been only able to reopen following the hybrid model. This is just one of, one more example of why right now is not the time to change to this type of calendar. In regards to the survey sent out, how can you ask parents and teachers how comfortable they are with a calendar when you haven't said how you will reopen? Will it be five-day, hybrid, et cetera? Parents and teachers deserve to hear these issues being discussed at school board meetings. Please begin these discussions. Meredith Thompson, "In addition to the survey being carefully engineered to reflect a predetermined outcome, for example, using vague, nonspecific language and never mentioning the proposed calendar is a year-round schedule, anyone irrespective of their connection to RPS or lack thereof can fill out the survey and can do so as many times as they choose. As a former math teacher, the superintendent is well aware of the flaws of this data collection, and his ethics must be called into question as he willingly presents these misleading statistics as a representative, as a representative of anything other than a thinly veiled agenda. It has been a long, hard year for us all, for all of us. Please stop playing politics and ask the administration to utilize their one-point-five-million-dollar Office of Engagement to conduct an authentic, comprehensive effort for community engagement to determine if a year-round schedule is best for the children, families, staff, and faculty of RPS. Board members, if you vote through this plan for year-round school, can you guarantee your constituents that every school in the district will have all the necessary air quality improvements and structural changes completed to allow for a safe-in-person reopening in July? The only thing worse than virtual school will be year-round virtual school. Please do not jeopardize the district's ability to complete this significant work, allow, excuse me, required to allow for a safe return to in-person learning this fall. Kaisha King, "I am a third-grade teacher. After seeing that the bill was passed that mandated five days of in-person without funds, I urge this board to do the right thing with the funds we are hoping to receive. The right thing at the moment is not year-round schools. In due time, we could have an amazing year-round school that is planned out and not rushed into. I would hate for us to spend money on year-round schools and not repair our facilities. I get up a respiratory from my building alone, and to add COVID without the proper updates is wrong. I saw the data that Mr. Camus posted, and I was confused to why it did not include the district percentages of people who took the survey. That is vital, because it would show the percentage of the district that is for year-round and the ones who are not. It would allow, it would also show which stakeholders' voices were not heard. I also do not believe the survey is valid, because people can take it as many times as they please. Everything seems rushed. Please provide us with a calendar that shows how the money would be used if we did not use it for year-round. It honestly feels like it one-way or the highway. Please put safety first over rushing into opening buildings that were unsafe before COVID. Have a heart and truly reopen with love, not lust." Margaret Gentry, "The children enrolled in Richmond Public Schools have experienced so many changes and challenges since March, two thousand and twenty. And while all surrounding school systems have returned or are preparing to return to in-person learning, these children are once again disappointed, as they will not be returning this school year. A calendar change to year-round school, or whatever it is now called, is a drastic change that should not be fast-tracked into next year's school calendar. The children need as much stability and familiarity with their school experience when they return in person. I believe this will promote more enthusiasm among the students, which will translate into their success. Also, a change does not just affect one year. Succeeding calendar schedules should and need to be considered. A decision of this magnitude needs more time for study, as I do not think this model has proven effective when tried in other school districts." Caitlin Waldron, "Please understand that teachers are not against year-round schooling. We, for the most part, support the idea. The focus was always on a safe return. Safety means schools that are ready for students to enter the building. Safety means schools that are ready for staff. You have some buildings covered in carpet, carpet with windows that don't open. As those carpets are cleaned, they don't dry completely, because there's no airflow. This causes mold to grow. Your buildings need attention. Year-round schooling is a brilliant plan, but forcing it when schools aren't ready to be used isn't in the best interest of the students and staff. The ability to open windows has been brought up a lot, but most windows don't open or in an, or don't open or in an open style. There's no window. Facilities need to be on point for teachers and students to feel safe enough to go back. Fix those first, and then figure out year-round schooling. Make sure you're actually taking in what your stakeholders are talking about." Heather Crone, "I've been a high school teacher in RPS for twenty-three years. This school year has been draining and difficult for teachers and students. The year-round calendar proposal has only added to the anxiety. The timeline for implementation, implementation is ridiculously short. Please focus on making sure our buildings are safe for our return in September instead of trying to open with a jump-start session in July. Many of our buildings are old and in need of major HVAC repairs just to ensure a comfortable learning environment in the classrooms. Let's make sure every bathroom in every school building has working sinks outfitted with soap and paper towels. Let's please focus on the things that can be done this spring and summer with the most recent federal money in order to prepare to open in September. The survey that is now being touted as showing that more families and teachers are comfortable with a year-round calendar is ineffective. It has two questions. It can be taken multiple times. There is no way to tell who is completing the survey. I cannot imagine that a school system would make a major change like this based on one flawed survey. When the district explored changing school start times several years ago, the administration utilized surveys and held community meetings all over the city over the course of the entire year, so that families and teachers had multiple opportunities to express their feelings and opinions. Also, the studies that have been provided do illustrate academic improvement for students. But there are many other academic studies that have shown a year-round calendar to be ineffective, and many districts have tried it and then returned to a traditional calendar."
Time.
Lars and Kimberly Bolton, "We write again to reiterate our desire that this body pause the discussion on implementation of a year-round calendar to allow further community communication and more thorough strategic planning. In reviewing the proposed metrics for the reopening discussion, it is crystal clear that the tasks and work ahead are comprehensive and time-intensive. It is also clear that our children need to get back into the classroom. That should be the focus. To attempt to undertake the momentous task of ensuring the facilities, faculty, and staff are prepared to return face-to-face instruction and implementation of a completely new calendar, including creation of instruction plans for boost sessions, appear to set this district up for failure. Each endeavor alone deserves laser focus and attention. To split focus creates a situation where either endeavor could potentially fail in execution. Why create this situation? To successfully roll out a calendar change of this magnitude, you need community buy-in. We dispute and or question the superintendent's sunny characterization of the survey results demonstrating that more families and teachers are comfortable with the proposed change than not. Putting aside the poor drafting of the survey itself, the board materials for tonight point out that only two thousand caregivers in the district have responded, with no data or survey control mechanisms to capture whether these responses are unique to a student or multiple responses from the same household, and that families of color are underrepresented. In addition, the split between comfortable versus uncomfortable is not so overwhelming to demonstrate that there is a widespread, that there is widespread support for this change."
Time.
Claire, Clary Resba. My family does not support a calendar change this year. Please use the funding to prepare schools to safely reopen. To repair, excuse me, neglected infrastructure and to provide year-round tutoring to those that need it. I find myself writing again to express my displeasure with the proposed calendar changes for this year. Please use the funding and time to prepare schools to safely reopen and repair the neglected infrastructure. A planned reopening in July isn't realistic, given how little COVID preparedness has been completed to date. Redoing the entire year's schedule will distract from the important task of getting kids back in school. Getting kids back in schools safely in person. Please just try to focus on this one very important thing, reopening safely. Marcia E. West. I work at Barack Obama Elementary School. Ms. Richardson made us aware of funds as we educators. We educate, we as educators should request, excuse me. Please apply the one percent additional to educators, educators and salaries staff. Excuse me, and staff salaries. Every bit counts. Show me the money. Have a blessed day. Tejas Patel or Patel. My family does not support a calendar change for all students this year. RPS needs to concentrate its efforts on safe reopening. We doubt RPS's ability to focus on both reopening and a schedule shift at this point. Amanda Reisner. I just wanted to say one more time that as a teacher from the south side. That I, as a teacher from the south side, do not support the year-round calendar at this time. Shayla Riggs. I am a first grade teacher at RPS. I am strongly in support of a year-round calendar for RPS in general. But think that it is being pushed through too early. Not only do the kids need a full summer of outside play and relaxation. After so much stress, stress and screen time during this school year. But in addition, our buildings will not be able to be renovated safe for return by August. My building in particular has toxic mold that has made students and teachers sick in the past. And there will need to be some serious changes made to the HVAC and ventilation. If we are able to return during a pandemic that is only getting worse every day. I support a typical school year start for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So we can give kids and staff a chance to rejuvenate. Give sufficient time to make our building safe and allow for extra time to get staff and RPS families fully vaccinated. Cynthia Green. I am writing to voice my opposition to a year-round calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. The negative public comments about this have all been clear on social, on all social media and forums. The majority of us do not want this. The survey the superintendent is now citing as positive for year-round school is flawed and cannot be trusted. There were no parameters to ensure the integrity of data gathered. Let's try, let us try to get back to normal. I have taken some time to look at the data from the surveys that will be presented here tonight. First, we have a student population of about twenty-four thousand seven hundred sixty-three. Only two thousand thirty parents slash caregivers responded to this survey. To say that this survey is representative of how our families are feeling is misleading. Of those that did respond. Twenty percent were not sure of the calendar. Twenty-one percent were not sure they would even send their child back. This would mean that the majority of families that responded are either very uncomfortable. Uncomfortable or not sure. I wouldn't say that a majority are feeling good about the proposed calendar. We can also say the same for the data shown by the teacher survey. The not sure category is twenty-seven. Or twenty-five percent of respondents. With the majority of teachers not wanting to teach the additional dates. If you're going to buy the data from these surveys. I would think it represents a majority of families or teachers not in favor of a year-round, of year-round for the twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two school year. Angela Cosby. I'm a proud RPS teacher. As someone who taught in a year-round school in North Carolina for eight years. I say no to switching our traditional school calendar. Let me say it again, no, no, no. Jackie Bradenbach. I am a teacher here in RPS. I am absolutely opposed to even the idea of year-round schools for the upcoming year. With the upheavals that everyone has gone through in the past year, in my opinion. We need to have at least one year where things can go back to a more normal. I know that many people had to change their plans for travel last year. And have already scheduled times to go for this year. For my family, we are planning a trip that will incorporate a memorial for my father-in-law at the end of July. I will be attending that. Lee Emma Lyon. I fully support moving to changing to this year-round schedule in August twenty twenty-one. This schedule will provide positive impacts to many of our RPS students. And the slight change or disruption to our schedule should not prevent us from moving forward for the greater good of RPS. I applaud the superintendent and the school board for putting this option forward for consideration. Margaret Bradshaw. Please do not use the data from the survey as justification to vote for changing the school's schedule. To year-round school. The survey is poorly constructed, confusing, and can be taken multiple times. The survey should be disregarded. Cameras's email on Friday saying that teachers and families are comfortable with the change is unbelievable. Especially given the overwhelming negative feedback from teachers and families at last week's board meeting. Cameras's heavy-handed manipulation of data to serve his agenda is incredibly disappointing. Please, please, please do not vote to change the schedule. Kristen Dutton. What happened to making Carver and Bellevue magnet schools? It was just over a year ago that there was much fanfare over giving these schools. The funding and resources they need and deserve. But now that money and those plans have seemed to have seen, seem to have evaporated. Why is that? Not only are they not getting the immediate funding they were promised. There is also no plan for funding future years, which is the same case for the current year-round school plan. Given the fact that the Carver and Bellevue Magnet School projects have been watered down, if not abandoned. Why should anyone have confidence in RPS implementing? A fourteen million dollar year-round schedule that starts in four months. That's less than twenty weeks. While simultaneously catching up on years of deferred maintenance. Some people love to say that RPS can walk and chew gum at the same time. I'd advocate for walking first. Let's get the schools safely reopen this fall for all families who want in-person learning. Then and only then should we start talking about year-round school. The only thing worse than virtual school is year-round virtual school. And the only thing worse than an empty promise is a broken one. I hope that Carver and Bellevue get the magnet, magnet schools they deserve. Sarah Hudgens, excuse me, Susan Hudgens, I'm sorry. I am an RPS teacher who votes no to the year-round calendar for the upcoming school year. I am not opposed to revisiting the topic for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, but now is not a good time. Rachel Nielsen. First of all, I think everyone can agree that the survey is deeply flawed and the data is completely invalid. Any person in the world can take this survey and they can take it as many times as they choose. Also, the calendar is so poorly communicated or intentionally confusing. That very few people will take the time to understand it. There's no mention of year-round schools. It is very sad and beyond obvious. That this is not an honest attempt to collect true feedback from stakeholders, but a strategy to push through an agenda. Teachers have been begging for behavior therapists for years. I cannot imagine how relieved teachers, staff, and administrators would be in the, if in the fall. There was an adequate number of behavior therapists to assist in the incredibly challenging task ahead. To ensure safe learning experience. A safe learning experience for in-person school. If the board feels summer instruction would be beneficial, especially for the proposed five thousand students. Why not implement the administration's proposed boost programs for a few weeks this August? And a few weeks next July. This could be managed without restructuring the entire calendar. There isn't money to continue year-round school beyond two years. The vast majority of schools referenced in the study of area round, area year-round schools. Have returned to a traditional calendar. I wonder why. If year-round school is the right thing for RPS, it should be done in the right way with proper community engagement. Time to plan and long-term funding identified. Anything less is shortchanging the students of RPS. Please use the fourteen million, eight million next year for additional learning support like behavior therapists and tutors. And enriched incentivized summer programs that our teachers and students desperately need immediately. Versus trying to implement a year-round calendar for just two years when the money runs out. Emily Sarat. I am writing today as a new parent to the district with a first grader at Barack Obama Elementary. And a pre-K student at the Mary Scott Preschool. When we, when we first joined the district back in October, I felt satisfied with the board's handling of the pandemic. Voting to be virtual, fully virtual through December of twenty twenty. When the surveys went out towards the end of twenty twenty for the board to discern what the public wanted. As far as virtual, hybrid, full reopening. It was unclear as to how soon vaccines would be available. How quickly those vaccinations would be given and who would be prioritized in that process. Given that uncertainty, I indicated in the survey that I would not be comfortable sending my children back to in-person learning. Since then, things have changed. Teachers in our district are being vaccinated. We are sitting around watching as other school districts around us and across the country are able to reopen. And offer a hybrid model to all students safely and effectively. The more I've tuned into board meetings, the more frustrated I've become. With the lack of planning that has been happening to get schools open. The lack of a budget for certain necessary upgrades should not be the most heavily leaned-on reason. For not having any sort of plan in place for reopening. Furthermore, I would urge the board to consider a more aggressive reopening for the spring. Greater than eight hundred, greater than the eight hundred number of students I saw somewhere last week. I make this request knowing full well what risks are to me personally. As a person with underlying conditions who could potentially contract a severe case of COVID. Sarah Beth Kowagel. Again, I apologize if I mispronounced the last name. Oops. Excuse me. Here we are. We need to reopen schools as safely as possible. I would love to have windows in my classroom and every classroom in the district that open. This is essential for the best ventilation for all of us. Also, we should have windows that open as a secondary fire exit. Between working on installing superior ventilation systems. And fixing all the windows that are permanently closed, I believe we need until September to reopen schools. Please give RPS the extra few weeks that will be needed to ensure. A smooth, as smooth as a reopening as possible. Katie Nolan. I keep hearing the soundbite from superintendent cameras and other school board members. That survey, that the survey data shows that more families and teachers. Are comfortable with the proposed change than not. This is not, this is, this is an inaccurate statement and a frightening example of misconduct and manipulation. First, the data from the survey cannot be used to make a decision. As the survey was grossly flawed and therefore the results are irrelevant. Second, and much more importantly, at last week's school board meeting, we sat through nearly two hours of public comment. And the overwhelming sentiment was that people are opposed to year-round schooling, especially for this coming year. The critiques of year-round schooling were thoughtful, specific, and well-reasoned. While the school board had been scheduled to approve the funding for year-round schooling that night. It was clear that there was no way in good conscience they could approve a year-round school calendar. After such strong and obvious opposition from their constituents. So rather than voting on, voting it through and causing an uproar. They chose to change the language a bit in the budget and punt the decision on the school calendar to this week. Or next week, no one is quite sure. Hoping it would give them more time to spread the word through a targeted PR campaign. That falsely says people are in favor of this change. The manipulation and deceit that is being used to force this change to year-round schooling. Is insulting at best and reprehensible at worst. It is time to put an end to this distraction and begin planning for a safe return to school in the fall. Please stop playing politics and focus on your one task at hand, getting our kids back into their schools. Derek Mosley. I wanted to take a moment to sing the praises of Principal Trotter and Aspire Academy under Richmond Alternative Schools. I truly believe in the work that is happening there and was ecstatic to see some of our students graduating a few days ago. Let's keep this good thing going by understanding the unique differences between alternative programs. Like this one and recognizing that all students, especially undercredited, overage ones. Need to learn in varied ways. Pat Levy Lavell. I write for two reasons. First, please adequately fund the Carver and Bellevue magnets. RPS decided to commit to these in December two thousand nineteen. But now, when the rubber meets the road, there's hardly any money for them in the current budget. This feels like a broken promise. Please fix this problem. Second, I want to explore year-round school. We should do deep and deliberate engagement across RPS to look at this for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. For the moment, the priority needs to be on gearing up for on-time, in-person reopening for fall twenty twenty-one. Corinne Tilly. I am an elementary school teacher with RPS. And I am writing to say I am against the new calendar, as is every single teacher and parent I have spoken to. This is not the year to implement such a drastic change. And certainly not a year to make thousands of our students attend seven extra weeks of school. When they are already burnt out. Students and teachers are exhausted and just want things to go back to normal. And that includes a normal summer vacation. Kara Brought Stu. I am the mother, mother of one Benford Middle School student and one Thomas Jefferson High School student. I do not support sending my children back into the classroom. Until our entire household has been vaccinated for COVID nineteen. Several members of our household may have more severe re- Several members of our household may have more severe reactions and outcomes to COVID nineteen due to their unique medical histories. In addition, my husband, as an essential worker, has been working with the public and managing the risks of COVID nineteen exposure during the entire pandemic. Our family can adjust and support the proposed school calendar if and only if two concerns are fully addressed. First, every school in RPS needs to be comfortable to comfortable to learn and work for every student and staff member. That means the HVAC system and school building needs to provide a warm, comfortable learning space when it is cold outside and a cool, comfortable learning space when it is hot outside. Second, as the parent of an exceptional education student, I believe that RPS needs to utilize the additional instructional support funds for truly effective instructional supports. I am not convinced that boost sessions are going to be effective. I know that attending more school is not the answer for my son's learning challenges. However, I do believe the new proposed calendar with more breaks in the school year will be beneficial for both of my children and possibly for our family as a whole. RPS needs to offer real and effective reading intervention for all struggling readers, especially struggling. Thank you. Matt Nielsen. Fifteen months ago, at perhaps the most well-attended public hearing in recent school board history, the board voted in favor of making Carver and Bellevue Magnet Schools for this coming school year. Now each scoot school is being allocated only one hundred thousand dollars for the next year. Why is there no follow-up talk of the magnet programs? Did you think the communities would forget? Please address the programs and continue to support them as promised. The only thing worse than an empty promise is a broken one. Please do what is right and uphold the promise to properly fund the magnet schools at Carver and Bellevue for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two calendar year. Also, the fact that the superintendent and some of this board want to allocate fourteen million dollars for a year-round calendar without comprehensive community engagement and clear support from stakeholders is unconscionable. An invalid web survey does not cut it. An impromptu survey was created minutes ahead of a meeting two weeks ago when the administration saw the public comments were generally not in favor of a calendar disturbance in an already tumultuous school, tumultuous year. Now the results are being touted that families and teachers are comfortable with the proposed change. There is no way to ensure that the survey responses are from RPS families and teachers. This is an attempt to pass an unnecessary calendar change that can likely only be funded for two years. Instead, we should truly, we should be truly asking teachers what they need to remediate any learning loss. Teachers have been asking to have more behavior specialists and include more tutors this summer. Dennis Thomas. I'll be, I will be speaking on behalf of Revolution Foods this evening to the board on the Vended Meals Program RFP twenty dash sixty-nine, sixty-eight dash ten. Since I have only two minutes, I will be condensing the speaking part, but wanted to make sure the board has the information. Formal protest was January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Revolutionary food, excuse me, Revolution Foods responded to a bid on the Vended Meals Program for Richmond Public Schools on November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Bids were turned in and a notice of award was given to the incumbent preferred meals. In reviewing the evaluation rubrics, we decided to formally protest and sent a letter to Ms. Shonda Henderson on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. In reviewing the evaluation rubrics in the bids, there are many discrepancies. Two rubrics in the RFP shows on page six to seven a description on how the responses will be scored, which somehow also refers to an appendix P, page eighty-four. Page seven allocates a point system for evaluation, but appendix P allocates an advantageous, highly advantageous and not advantageous system for evaluation. How can both be used in fair? I didn't want to bring this up for discussion at the board meeting, but we are requesting information and memos, notes, details, et cetera, on how these points were allocated and will want to know which of our references were called and whether the evaluator that called them asked the questions also laid out on page seven. This seems most critical in the scoring since we lost points in that category C that deals with our references. We feel that with all the discrepancies, these bids should be thrown out and the process should be independently, independently redone and evaluated. Sarah and Doug Brayban. Continue to amplify your voice to hold the superintendent accountable to reopening the schools as recommended by the governor. As Mr. Cameras takes the number of students from minuscule to slight, slightly above, it appears he recognizes we need to be, we need to better serve our vulnerable students from irrevocable harm. We need your energy to continue to enlarge the number of students who have, who can have the option of returning. Think of it as a dress rehearsal for reopening next school year. Transparency in his plan will build community confidence. Love is not passive. Love is in our agency of restoring the optimal environment for learning and development. Love is not stonewalling the details of progress. VDH and RPS coordinated special events to get RPS staff to the front of the vaccine line. Majorities, the majority should be vaccinated. Give us the actual measured metrics. No more excuses or embarrassing mismanagement. We have to raise our bar. Last is not an option for RPS anymore. Equity is not being last of one hundred and thirty-two school districts in Virginia. Lead, our children are counting on you. We will support you. Allison Kaplan. I am a school counselor in RPS and while I do support the consideration of a year of year-round school, I would appreciate it if the discussion were reserved for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. I wholeheartedly believe that parents, students, teachers, and staff need more time to prepare for this change. This year has been overwhelmingly plagued with loss of all kinds and a full summer to de-stress and enjoy the positive energy that good weather brings is crucial. Aside from this, if, I think there are still too many lingering questions and not enough time for many to properly prepare to go year-round by August. I would like more clarification on, on employment during boost sessions. I understand that a specified number of teachers will be considered for boost sessions, but I wondered about the required qualification for these teachers. Will encore and specialty teachers be provided this opportunity? As a ten-month counselor, I am aware of others in my role as where, as well as instructional assistants who maintain part-time jobs and are reliant on summer work. Will they be provided the opportunity to work during boost sessions? If parents have to work. If parents have to work during boost sessions, will transportation be provided to partner program daycares? While students who have attended the YMCA and other programs this year. Was that Thomas Collins?
Tom, yes.
Jordan Alexander. There are many concerns about the English curriculum. We are told to teach this to fidelity. We have been given a scripted curriculum and are not permitted to shy away from it. This is an issue for numerous teachers. Why hasn't there been any survey given to teachers on how they feel learning is occurring, if any? If there was a survey, you would find out that many teachers are leaving the districts af- the district after this year if this curriculum is forced on us moving forward. It was Black History Month and we are, we were not allowed to teach any Black history or give any literature. Now we are in Women's History Month and we have the same situation. What are we teaching the kids? It is difficult to take this in when looking at the administration. They do not mirror our students. How have we allowed outsiders to come into our district to tell teachers that we are not competent enough to teach? That we have to be given a script and a horrible script. Give the students a survey. Ask them if they are reading, if they enjoy it, if they are learning. It's as if this administration has dumbed everything down for our students, which won't give them a chance in the real world. Where is the Black History Curriculum that was spoken about at the beginning on the real world? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Where was the Black History Curriculum that was spoken about at the beginning on the news? Was that just a political ploy? Are they playing a game with our kids? The students are not reading at all at this point, only the few pages. This isn't going to prepare our kids. Where are the teacher surveys? Why are they not listening to teachers? The administration is told about how curriculum, how this curriculum isn't working. Elizabeth Green. I do not believe going to year-round school is the correct decision. Parents, teachers, guardians, et cetera, have been very clear on their opinion regarding this issue. We are coming off of an extremely hard and confusing year. To go from this to another massive adjustment is counterproductive. Why would you put that stress and confusion on your teachers and the families? This decision doesn't seem to be made in the best interest of your community, but in the best interest of you. Before you try to change everyone's lives, let people breathe. Let the community try to go back to a normal year and see where you are in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Tammy Finster. In response to Richmond Public Schools' proposed calendar change, I submit my letter of concern. Teachers and families have been assured, had been assured that RPS would keep the safety of our community at its highest priority. We believed you when you had the Richmond community's safety at heart by remaining virtual through the end of this school year. With the unexpected proposal of a drastic increase in students to return to in-person after spring break, this is alarming. With an opportunity for high-need students to have an option to return, I am curious if any one of you have spent a day in a self-contained elementary school classroom for students who are severely affected by communication differences, sensory differences, motor planning differences, who have great difficulty conforming to an environment driven by neurotypicals. The majority of my current students require one-to-one support to keep them safe and to support communication and regulation. Their differences challenge their ability to communicate, control their bodies, manage dysregulation, sustain attention, retrieve information, take care of themselves, follow health and safety rules, and so much more. Jeannie Booker. Thanks, thank you for sharing the results of the survey regarding school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. As of this morning, though, this data does not have a breakdown of results by school. The presentation does not acknowledge that any one person could take this survey multiple times from any location. Further, saying that more families and teachers are comfortable with the change than are not is quite a bit different than noting that fifty percent, fifty-six percent of parents and caregivers are not comfortable with the calendar. The framing of the survey data needs to be accurate. Further, the survey had two thousand thirty responses with families of color underrepresented. This is a red flag that outreach about a massive calendar change has not been sufficient. Justifying a vote on this calendar based on this data would be very troubling. The school, the board should require public hearings on this calendar with proven outreach to reach all RPS families and caregivers before voting on this change. In all of the discussions about the superintendent's contract, new calendar proposal, and bipolar ionization, has there been any space or time to discuss the high school and middle school program of studies which are listed as a board action item tonight? Any errors or lack of compliance with the VDOE regulations in this doc, in these documents will have a huge adverse impact on non-elementary school students. Nicole Lee. I have been part of the RPS family since two thousand eight. I am a related service, services provider. I am writing to express my concern about the proposal of a year-round school calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Year-round school is a viable option that should be discussed, but it seems hasty to implement it for the upcoming school year when there are so many unknown variables. Quite truthfully, most of these unknowns will be greatly clarified by waiting just one more year. There are many reasons to delay a calendar change, but I will focus on one, staffing. In pushing this calendar ahead, it seems to be the assumption that staff will remain in place. This is an assumption that may or may not be true. The letter of intent sent earlier this year is not a good indicator of who will stay as the responses were due before serious discussion of a calendar change. We work in the schools for the love of educating these children. It is not for the salary, but face it, a huge and priceless benefit of working for the school system is the chance to spend more time with your own children. This benefit and incentive to stay will greatly, will be greatly diminished for staff members who work in RPS but live in neighboring districts where the school calendar will remain traditional. Besides teachers, you have other professionals to consider. Psychologists, nurses. Megan Petezold is providing a student comment, parent approval granted. Hello, my name is Cecil Atkins Jr. I'm a student from Southampton Elementary and have a question that has been raining on me for quite some time. If we use Zoom cloud meetings in second grade, why don't we keep using it instead of Google Meet? Zoom is way less buggy than Google Meet. Google Meet presentations are often bugged out and some classmates can't see or hear them. Zoom has very high-resolution screen sharing and doesn't bug out as often as Google Meet. Zoom doesn't lag as much as Google Meet also. Google Meet often kicks users out of the meeting without the host intentions. Zoom does not do this. Zoom was more secure with the waiting room. On the other hand, Google Meet users, teachers, don't lock up their meet as much only because, only because only the students are supposed to be joining. But what if someone else finds out the code and the meeting is open to all users and the person joins and messes with it, for example, spamming, screeching, et cetera? Zoom has a waiting room that shows you the people waiting to join. You can admit them or not. You can restrict settings to participants in the meeting as in restricting presentation, not allowing participants to unmute themselves, et cetera. You can transfer ownership to participants in Zoom. Shannon Dowling. Shannon Dowling. I am writing to ask you not to rush into a FY twenty-two year-round calendar. Many school systems across the country have returned to school predicated on the notion that classrooms that hold students must have operable windows. Having proper HVAC is vital to ensuring the safety of our students, teachers, and staff. We must focus our energy, time, and finances toward making our facilities safe. Learning loss is not a real thing. It's an invention of the standardized testing crowd. If it's so fragile that a few months or even a year will cause it to somehow disappear, it was never learned in the first place. We can get distracted by the made-up notion of learning loss. Professional educators know that one must apply knowledge before it is learned, and our children have spent the past year applying their knowledge to living through a pandemic. That is where the learning, that's where the learning has happened. Politicians are loud and their voices carry. It's hard to ignore the noise. I prefer to listen and amplify the advice of our professional educators. I hope you will do the same. Nicole Thompson. I am undecided about the new calendar, but to use that survey as a justification for approving the new calendar is irresponsible. Number one, the survey had no guardrails. Anyone could fill it out. People in Himarko could have filled out, could have filled it out. People in Egypt could have filled it out. The survey had no limits on the number of times it could be taken. Anyone could have completed it multiple times. There was no data control. How could you possibly know that families and teachers are really comfortable with the new calendar? Maybe they aren't even in, they aren't even in the survey data. Maybe they are. You'll never know. I sincerely hope you are focusing on facilities because when Governor Northam signs the bill making in-person required for fall twenty twenty-one, those schools better be safe and ready. The building sat empty for the last year, but nothing was done to fix them or even determine what needed to be fixed. Please focus on fixing the schools. The new calendar can wait until the winter intercession. Lori Creekman. If the conversation regarding year-round schools must continue, which I believe to only serve as a distraction from other sustainable solutions needed to ensure our return to in-person learning, I ask that the school board direct the administration to take down the current surveys regarding it and replace them with something that ensures only teachers and parents are truly heard. Simply put, the survey is not secure and the results thus far should be void. Anything other than this action would not be in the spirit of the survey's purpose. Margaret Cook. I strongly support allowing a limited number of students to return to in-person learning as soon as possible. It is unacceptable that RPS is on, is one of the only two school districts in the state that have not been able to provide this to our students who desperately need in-person instruction. Catherine Schink. I, since I have not seen any student surveys go out yet, I asked my first-period community circle whether they preferred a year-round school schedule or the current one, including one student who attended Patrick Henry on the year-round schedule previously. Of my seventeen students, two were in favor of year-round. By no means am I exten- attempting to extrapolate this data to the greater RPS student body, but I am trying to get the board to distribute student surveys as well as teacher-parent surveys. Gibson Gehan. I am writing to you to understand the criteria to ensure our kids return to RPS schools safely and effectively. I am not asking for our kids to return tomorrow, but would love the school board to have documentation of metrics that will allow different phases of children in the building. Also, would like to understand the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two plan for reopening further. Is it a full day for elementary students and the phase to less days with middle and high school kids? I am eager to understand a plan versus talking about if we get kids back. Thank you for your time. Betsy Milburn. As you move forward with reopening plans, one of the most important parts is the ventilation airflow rate within each single space of every single building. To date, we have only heard about ionization mitigations for buildings. This only addresses a building, and if the building has central air and heat and the ventilation rate meets the industry standards. What if a building has radiators for heat or non-centralized forced air systems, window units, or simply a low-flow rate of air? What about the rooms that do not have heating or cooling? What happens when the forced air is off? The ionization would not work if the air is not moving in a building. The question is, how are you budgeting for continuous ventilation in a building? All the buildings and all the rooms that people will be present in. I have not heard or seen this issue discuss, discussed. This is very disheartening and will simply make someone sick. My second point tonight is the calendar change. The poll that went out feels more like a push poll rather than an authentic attempt to gather information. The poll can be answered multiple times. The questions do not support timing, feedback in a clear way. RPS can and should do better. The poll did ask for school, which equate, which, excuse me, which equates to a spectrum of grade learned level. Why was this metric not reported back? This impacts for ele- the impacts for elementary, middle, and high school are very different, and this needs to be taken into account. While I fear, feel that year-round school may be beneficial, our Richmond Public Schools needs to fix a few foundational issues around equitable resources in middle and high school before taking this leap. Emmy Reedy. I do not support a calendar change for the upcoming school year and feel RPS should focus all of its efforts on safely reopening. Amy Knapp. As a parent of two elementary schools, children in RPS, I am in favor of the proposed year-round calendar changes. I believe it makes more sense to start with this new calendar for the upcoming school year, summer twenty twenty-one, instead of having a normal year than switching the following year. Melissa Johnston. I am the IB Diploma Program Coordinator at Thomas Jefferson High School. I am so happy to see RPS taking a more inclusive stance in the scheduling, in scheduling school holidays to coincide with the holiest days that many of our students and staff observe. I do need to bring to your attention, though, the likely conflict in scheduling that closing schools on May third may bring. The IB examination schedule generally runs from late April through the third week in May. It is highly probable that there will be examinations in at least one subject that we offer scheduled for May third of next year. The IBO is conservative about rescheduling examinations, and in line with their published examination rules, I do not believe that we would be authorized to offer that day's exams on another date. I have written to IB to voice my hope that they would not schedule exams on a globally observed holiday, but I do not know if that will be a consideration. My point in writing, then, is to ensure that we will not be barred from offering any scheduled examinations on May third, that we would be able to make arrangements to transport students to and from the schools for exams, similar to Saturday school, and make any other needed arrangements. For your reference, I have attached the section on rescheduling exams from the Diploma Program Assessment Procedures, twenty twenty-one publication. Diane Calendar. This letter is in support of the Aspire Academy of RPS. This is an essential program that assists students who are on the verge of dropping out of school with providing them with support, the support that is needed to complete school. We are, we currently have forty-five students enrolled. I had the pleasure of attending mid-year graduation for three of our students. Please continue this vital program. Madam Chair, I believe that is all the, uh, comments.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Lilly and Ms. Collins, and thank you to all of our parents and students and stakeholders that, um, shared your, your thoughts with us this evening. It's greatly appreciated. All right, the next item on our agenda is our strategic plan, Dreams for RPS update. Graduation, Mr. Camus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to ask Dr. Pep to, uh, share this presentation. And Dr. Pep, do you need me to share my screen or are you doing that?
Uh, I can do that. Thank you, Mr. Camus. Um, just make sure I can do that here. Can you see my screen here?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Chair, uh, Madam Chair Burke, Vice Chair Young, school board members, Mr. Camus. Um, it is my pleasure this evening to give you an update on one of our most important goals, graduation. Um, as you know, through our Dreams for RPS strategic plan, one of our top ten goals is to increase the graduation rate as well as increasing the percentage of our students who attend a four-year or two-year college, enter the workforce in a living wage job, or participate in national service, um, once upon graduation, and to increase this graduation rate for all students as well as each subgroup. Thinking about our data from last year, uh, while we did make some gain, uh, we know that we wanted to, we need to do much better with our graduation rate and our dropout rate. So, uh, we have put in place over the last couple of years a three-part strategy. Um, first, focusing on our seniors, uh, really looking at each senior cohort and tracking, um, each, each of them against their graduation requirements for their diploma type. Um, we are, we've been working with, uh, counseling teams to monitor each student's progress to on-time graduation, and we've worked to identify and implement individual student supports as well as, uh, school-wide and division-wide supports that we can provide. So we've, we really worked, uh, over the last two years to have an intense focus with our school teams on our seniors. Second is dropout recovery. Um, we know that we have students that we've lost, and so we began this year with a strong push, um, to get students back to us. Um, and so, uh, we've worked to identify students who have dropped out and then do outreach, uh, using relationships that they may have, our, um, our family, uh, and community liaisons, our school-based teams, et cetera, to work with students on a case-by-case basis and help bring them back, um, into school, but perhaps in a, in a different model. One of the things we heard loud and clear from our students when we, when we talked to them about why they maybe didn't want to come back to school was, um, just going back into the same environment was not necessarily what would set them up for success. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the programs we've put in place. Um, but as we've worked with, um, re-engaging our students in school, we've worked to, um, match them with the right program. And as part of that, we've expanded our alternative pathways so that we can meet the needs of more non-traditional students. And then third, um, the whole point is to, um, prevent students from dropping out in the first place. And so, uh, we've developed an early warning system where we identify students based on trends who are at risk of not completing high school, and we provide, uh, timely supports to those students, and we really monitor and make sure that next steps are happening so that we do not lose those students on the front end. Additionally, um, within these, uh, early warning indicators, we've developed a set of, uh, watch lists so that we know, uh, which students we have to just, um, really make sure we're supporting. Um, and so the list of students on the left, um, uh, each of these students, none of them are, uh, a monolith. Uh, they all have unique needs. Uh, but these are the categories of students that we know have historically, um, been more likely to not graduate on time. And so we've developed student supports to align to their needs, and, and a student who, um, i- is potentially at risk of not graduating on time will receive an individual support plan. They have, um, individual graduation coaches. We have, um, we give them options for the alternative pathways I mentioned. Um, robust academic supports in the way of tutoring, SOL academies and the like, partnering with community organizations to reengage students and, uh, making sure students have a clear path to complete their coursework. And then, um, of course, progress monitoring, uh, this watch list. We meet with high school principals and counselors, uh, bi-weekly to review progress to date um, and to outline, um, for, so schools can request support, um, or identify any problem-solving strategies. This is an example of a personalized student support plan on the left. So this outlines, um, the, the credits that students need as well as the verified credits they may need, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. And then on the right, um, is a series of interventions, programs, and supports. And so, um, when any member of the RPS team or community partners does outreach with students, they start with this. And so they can sit down with a student and their family and really outline, you know, here's where you are, here's where you need to be, and, um, here's some options on how you can get there. Um, and so we try to really match the student with, um, with their needs and the supports. Our alternative pathways to graduation, um, again, we have, um, done a lot of work to, um, to beef these programs up. Um, over the past year, we've developed additional programs, but we've also worked to, um, strengthen our existing programs and we plan to expand programs. So, um, as you may know, we have, uh, three, we had three, prior to this year, we had, um, three existing programs. Um, the PLC, the Personalized Learning Center, uh, that has, uh, twelve students enrolled. Aspire, um, actually, this is, uh, this is a, a slight typo. We have forty-four students enrolled at Aspire. Um, but both PLC and Aspire are, um, uh, programs for students who were underage, overcredited, and it provides them a self-paced method to complete their coursework, um, and provide additional wraparound supports, um, as they are doing that. And it allows them to do that traditionally in a half-day, uh, or for a full-day model. ISAP is the, uh, is our GED program. So for students who, um, uh, made the decision that a high school diploma is not for them, we are able to at least offer a GED program. Um, our new programs that we've added over the past year and a half, uh, the Secondary Success Center, which I've, I've talked with, um, this body about some, is, um, is our drop, uh, basically students who had stopped coming to school, so students who had dropped out, and, uh, we've worked to bring those students back in and give them a pathway to graduation. We have seventy-three students currently enrolled. Our Bi-Lingual Newcomers Academy, um, we'll talk about that in just a minute. We have a hundred and thirty students enrolled. And Conganis, uh, we have eighty-one students enrolled. Um, and as part of our work next year, we'd like to expand some of our existing programs and services to meet the needs of select middle school students. Um, and then we are looking to integrate, uh, programs that do similar things such as Aspire and PLC into one program. Uh, and then we also want to launch RPS at Night, which is basically, um, uh, school, but, um, rather than going to school during the day, you go to school at night. Um, again, to max, to offer maximum flexibility to, um, the many different needs our students have to pursue, uh, their gra- uh, their high school education. The, um, just a quick note here on the Secondary Success Center. Um, it is for any, any resident in Richmond City ages seventeen to twenty-one who have previously dropped out of our RPS high school. Um, and this is really focused on meeting the needs of unique learners and to make the program as convenient as possible. We also include academic and career counseling so that students are successful. Uh, the Conganis program is a specialized program for our English learners who are seventeen or older. So these are for students, um, who are English language learners, again, typically, um, under credit for their age who may not see a feasible path to graduation under a traditional model. And so this program provides, um, again, a accelerated model with intensive, uh, language and academic supports so that students can graduate in three years or less. We have eighty-one students in this program. And then, lastly, our Newcomer Academy is for our newly arrived immigrant English learner students ages 14 to 17, for students who've been in the country for up to one year. And this is a hands-on, hands-on bilingual-based instructional model where students receive instruction around acquisition of English language, as well as honoring their native language, and ultimately putting them on a path to graduate with an advanced diploma and a seal of bilinguacy. Students in the Newcomer Academy also receive wraparound services so they know how to navigate the sort of high schools and post-secondary education environment in the United States. And we currently have 130 ninth and 10th graders in the Newcomer Academy. So I share all of this programming because it really reflects the supports and efforts we've put in place over the last two years. I would also say, in addition to some other measures we put in place, such as making some scheduling changes at the high school so that students are taking credit-bearing classes and such. But in short, we've been very busy as a district, working with our schools, our students, and our families, to really provide multiple paths to meet students where they are and give them a viable pathway to success. And given that, I think we're starting to see these efforts really bear fruit for our students. So I want to start first with, these are our projections for this year. Now, I want to highlight that you'll see the word "projection," projected is highlighted. So this is what our data is telling us right now. It is a projection, so nothing is final until it's final. I will add that our projections last year from around this time, pre-COVID closure, were very much in line to where we ended officially. So I do have a relative degree of confidence in these projections. These have been validated in partnership with our central data and with school-based teams. But again, I want to emphasize projections. If these projections bear out, though, we're seeing some really, I think, work, momentum in the right direction. So this is the projected dropout rate. And you can see, as a division, two years ago, we were at 24%. Last year, we went down by ju, just under a 1% point. And we are projecting a 13-point decrease this year. And you can see, that's across, decreases really across all of our schools that didn't already have a 100% graduation rate. So you can see continued work at, decreases at Armstrong, George With, 25% decrease, Huguenot an 18% decrease, John Marshall a 4.9% decrease, and John Marshall a 0.8% decrease. So these are very promising numbers. And as I continue to go with this, I want to pause and just give a huge shout-out to our school, our high school principals, APs, counselors, teachers, our staff who've worked to make these alternative programs available. This has really been an all-hands-on-deck effort, and I think a really great model of central, like, the power of a, of all schools working together with the division to tackle a big problem. When we look at projected dropout rate by subgroup, we see a similar promising pattern here. And so we see the dropout rate going down across all subgroups. And in particular, as you all know, the painful reality of our Hispanic and Latino dropout rate and our English language learner dropout rate, we've seen a significant decrease, basically cutting that in half across those two subgroups. And again, I attribute that to three things. First, two years ago, coming out of our transcript audit, students who were English language learners were being placed in courses in their ninth and 10th grade year that had no bearing towards meeting their graduation requirements. We changed that immediately. And then the Secondary Success Center and Conganis, I think, have been also huge, huge levers for us. And then, and I think we'll see continued fruit, we'll see continued progress as a result of the Newcomers Academy. I'm calling out these two schools in particular as well, just to this point. And again, the team at, the teams at George With and Huguenot and their community liaisons across the South Side have been working tirelessly to address this particular challenge at their schools. And again, we've seen a significant decrease for George With and Huguenot among the Hispanic-Latino dropout rate. And part of that is bringing kids back in school. So part of this is preventing students from dropping out in the first place and keeping students in school this year during a global pandemic. But also, part of this is dropout recovery. And so since, since our efforts began in the fall, just since the fall, we've recovered 71 seniors who have re-enrolled in school after having dropped out. And so we're, we're really proud of those kids for, for coming back and giving us another chance to help them complete their high school education. Moving on to just overall progress to on-time graduation, I wanted to take a minute to update you on how the spring of 2020 is affecting our graduation work. So as you all may recall, we closed school on March 13th. And while many teachers continue to provide optional learning experiences, and while we provided lots of learning opportunities virtually, RPS, we did not have continued instruction throughout the spring, consist, you know, across the division. The DOE issued guidelines for how school divisions were to treat the closure and really gave us outlines of how students were to learn the remaining content of the fourth quarter of the school year. So for RPS, we outlined that students would complete a module via a virtual platform known as Edgenuity or a series of assignments developed by lead teachers, typically for elective or CTE courses. Upon successful completion, students received course credit. And it's important to note that for students who did receive course credit, they also, per state guidelines, received an associated verified credit automatically if it was a course associated with an SOL and a course exam. So that definitely was a benefit for students pursuing on-time graduation. And then, students who did not complete coursework, we have been working with, really since last summer, continuing on through the fall and the spring to remind students, push students. But they, if they didn't complete it, they received an "I" on their transcripts. And once the work is complete, the "I" is removed. So coming up on nearly a year of a dead, a year, students have until March 15th to complete their coursework, if they haven't already. And, and so if students complete the coursework, some of this, as a reminder also, grades were separate from credits. So grades were determined based on the grading, the temporary grading policy this board passed last spring to close out the school year. And credits are assigned separately. So a student can have an "A" without a credit if they had not yet completed the module, which they would have an "I." So if a student was passing the course as of March 2020 and they do not complete the module by March 15th, they will receive a 10-point reduction in their final grade, no lower than a "D," but they will receive credit. And if they were failing at the time of the closure, they have another opportunity. If they have not completed the module, they will receive, that "F" will become permanent. But students do have an opportunity, if they were failing, to still earn a course credit. For any student that receives an "F" in this situation, they will be invited to a special summer credit recovery program for one final opportunity to earn the course credit. To give you a sense of the impact this is having on students, again, we track this pretty regularly. This is a total number by campus of the courses, not students, but the total number of courses that current seniors need to complete. Note, some of these courses are not needed for graduation based on an individual student's transcript. So if a student is looking to prioritize, they should meet with their counselor to make sure they understand the courses they really do need that credit for versus those they could choose not to do should they, should they make that decision. Of course, we encourage students to complete all the coursework. As a reminder, as we get into thinking about progress to graduation and on-time graduation, that's different from, you know, dropout. And so our graduation requirements, just to recap, and this is really, these graduation requirements are for this particular cohort. Just as a reminder, if anybody's, for all those watching, there's a different set of graduation requirements for students who began high school starting in 1819. This cohort of seniors began high school prior to that. So every, you have to check graduation requirements based on your graduation year, okay? Or your start year into high school. But for this cohort, students need to earn course credits, 22 for a standard and 26 for an advanced. Course credits are earned when you take a class that's required and you pass it. You also need to earn verified credits, 6 for a standard and 9 for a verified. Verified credits are earned when you take an SOL or another state-approved alternative assessment, and you pass it. If you, you can also, depending on state rules, if you've made multiple attempts and you've scored within a certain range, you can, you can qualify for what's called a locally awarded verified credit, an LAVC. And, and basically, if a student demonstrates that they've mastered the content of the course, but for whatever reason haven't been able to demonstrate mastery on the SOL, there are state rules around still receiving a verified credit granted by us, which is called a locally awarded verified credit, that would still apply in this bucket. And then lastly, there tend to be other requirements. Typically, the most important piece here is for a standard diploma, for CTE credentials. But that requirement has been waived for this cohort of students, which is why it's crossed out here. And then these other requirements are built into our standard coursework. So students don't really have to worry about doing that separately. So in terms of this cohort, one of the biggest areas that holds kids back from progress to graduation is achieving the verified credits. And again, that means passing an SOL with the associated course. So this is the percent of students in the current senior cohort who have earned the verified credit requirements in each area per their diploma type. And so you can see, overall, we're at, you know, the high 70s and mid-80s for history. However, the state also has recently changed guidelines for locally awarded verified credits, and students are continuing to test. And remember, some students have just started a course for which they may be taking an exam. For example, a senior may not have yet been enrolled in, you know, US, Virginia History and US Government. So they wouldn't have been eligible to take that exam, just as an example, until this semester. So this number goes up when we look at students who are eligible for LAVCs based on the state guidance, as well as students who may be taking the SOLs. And again, as students test this spring, they may be, that, again, if they do not succeed on the exam, it increases their chances of being eligible for an LAVC. So you'll see here that we're in the 80s and 90s for these. So we feel like students are making very strong progress. This is, you know, compared to our concerns about verified credits in the past. Our students are pretty, are pretty well on track. I do want to acknowledge that the waiver from the state last spring was certainly a help. And I think the expansion of the LAVC eligibility was a help. But I also think our schools and students have gotten stronger with really being thoughtful about what students need, making sure students are getting preparation and remediation if there's a concern that they will struggle with the exam. The one last thing I'll say about this, these numbers do not yet include other alternative assessments that may replace an SOL verified credit. For example, and typically, this is, you'll see at schools like Open, for example, or Franklin, students, when they, if you pass an AP exam, if you get a 3 or higher on an AP English exam, you do not need to earn, you do not need to take the English SOL that can count as your verified credit. Or if you get a certain score on a certain SAT, things like that. And so those, those were, those are kind of all in the mix right now. So these numbers are probably slightly higher because they do not include a number of, small number of alternative assessments. So where does that lead us in terms of progress to on-time graduation? Bottom line, again, we're seeing really strong gains this year. Two years ago, we were at 70%. We went up, oh, you know, about a point and a half last year, and we are projecting a 13-point gain to be at 85% for on-time graduation. And again, you can see great gains across nearly all of our schools. The one caveat with Open, I don't think there's a need to be concerned that it's such a small end size. If once, and this might be a student, you know, who has, this is probably, this is one student. And this one student may have an IEP that is taking five years, and they are considered a slider. So when it comes out in the wash, it will not affect the graduation rate at the school. But again, the end size at Open is so small. One student who may be taking extra time could impact that. So no cause for alarm, I hope. And again, similarly, across every subgroup, we see, really, we see gains across the board and the highest gains among our Hispanic-Latino students and our English learner students. And again, very, very happy to see that we're making progress across these areas. And then finally, if you haven't heard the good news, or if you haven't, it's worth celebrating again. We did, through the Secondary Success Center's work, we graduated 25 students from previous cohorts. So students who had dropped out, you know, this doesn't improve our graduation number or change our graduation rate, but it's really great for 25 kids, or 25 young people. I use "kids" endearingly, but 25 young people, and we're just incredibly proud of them for powering through during this pandemic to, to come back and, and earn their high school diploma. So a big shout-out to those young folks. And then the appendix, if you're curious about how this is calculated, you can take a look at the appendix. And I will pause there. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Epp. That's, this is, I'm thinking back to a couple of years ago where we were. Had some cleaning up to do, but we've continued to excel and move up, and I am so happy to see that. I'll feel really, really, really great when it's 100% across the board. But thank you so much also for recognizing the faculties and staff members and people in communities that have helped to help our children. So thank you so much for that report. I will call on Mr. Young to let us know who is in line to speak, and I'll take it from there, Mr. Young. Who do we have?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed first, then Ms. Dorr, then Ms. Page.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I too want to commend the dedication, the hard work of our administrative teams and our guidance counselors and our teachers, and also, most importantly, our students who, Dr. Epp, you stated this earlier in your presentation, who, you didn't quite say it like this, but I'm summarizing, who really decided that they had some work to do, right? And they put forth the effort to get the work done. So I just want to commend everybody. I want to commend you for putting forward this information. Much of the information Much of the information a week or so ago that I asked about is in this PowerPoint. So I want to acknowledge that, and I thank you for that. Because this helps me make informed decisions as I look forward as a contributing board member and as a member of this governance team. So I want to say to you, and I know from one educated to the next, this took time. You had to get some data from some people. You probably had to cross-reference that data with some other data. And so you and I talked about this, and I appreciate, I, I really do. This, I was just over here ready to jump around because, you know, as a parent who had a daughter graduate from RPS, I too know where this data was some time ago. And so I'm really excited. I have a few questions that I want to share with you and my board colleagues, and, and if you want to answer them after each one, please let me know, or I can run them down at one, at one time. It is my understanding, this is question one, dear. It is my understanding that it's about thirty-five students who are on a list for Aspire. And if that number is accurate, why aren't those students included in the fourteen in your presentation?
You want me to? I can answer that one quickly.
Okay, awesome.
So it was thirty-five and nine were in the pipeline last week. When I spoke with Principal Trotter, he verified that it was forty-four now fully enrolled. Again, I, I apologize, that was a slip of the keyboard. It should have been forty-four, not fourteen. So I, I do very much apologize for that. But he had thirty-five, when I started the week and we ended the week, there were nine students who had been in progress, who were in referrals, but they are now officially enrolled.
But that's even better because we increased the number that's there. So that's, that's, that's awesome work to Mr. Trotter and his team. Question number two, if I may. Under existing, I can't, I can't remember what number that PowerPoint, that slide is, excuse me. But under is existing, is it called personalized or performance? Did that change?
Uh, under what?
Under the slide that discusses existing.
Oh, the performance, oh, I'm sorry, the Personalized Learning Center.
Yes, is that, is it personalized or is it performance? Did it change? I thought I heard at one time it was called performance.
I, I think we use those terms interchangeably.
Interchangeably, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is the one that, this is at RTC in partnership with communities and schools.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. This is not a question, but this is a comment. You stated continued fruit in your presentation to us. And I want to encourage you to continue to say that, because you know what it demonstrates for the public? That the seed that was planted for those students was planted in good and productive soil. And because that soil, that seed that was planted in the soil came out productive, they are our fruit, and that's the fruit that we want to continue to support. So I just wanted to say that, I was excited when you said that. Next one, number four, how was the monitoring implemented to address the students who did not complete their modules? And was there a monitoring system in place?
Yes, definitely, there was a monitoring system in place. We, we still use it. So we have a bi-weekly meeting with our school, high school teams, and we go through dropout data, progress to graduation. We go through division efforts, we go through school-based efforts, and we look at, we give, we, we go through the update on number of modules completed. At each school, each school has done all different types of outreach. Letters, social media, phone calls home. I know a couple of schools even like did a day focused on module completion with support. We have our, our float model in the morning for high school students who need help. I know division-wide letters went out in February. The schools sent out their own letters in the fall. So that, and, and so on Edge Annuity, the virtual, we get a report, so we can update it from that. And then on the, the ones that are more performance task-based, we have a team of teachers, lead teachers, who, as the, as the assignments come in, they turn that around within the week.
Thank you. And slide number fifteen, does courses represent modules or is that something separate?
Total courses. So modules or, we sort of, the Edge Annuity virtual courses are modules, and then there's these performance tasks, that those numbers represent both.
Okay, thank you. And last, last question. Because you touched on this with the English SOL and the opportunity for students to be exempt, I don't want to use the word exempt because in order to be exempt, they have to do something else, like you said, get a three on the AP or score however high on the SAT. Those students who don't fall in either one of those categories, when will students, parents and parents receive notification with the date, time and location and/or their eligibility for work keys assessment? And just for the public, can you just briefly explain what that work keys assessment is?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Great question. Thank you. The work keys is a state-approved alternative assessment that can be used to replace the SOL requirement, one SOL requirement in English. And we try to use that only after the fact, after a student has attempted the SOL and not been successful, just because it's, it's frankly just not as rigorous as the English SOL. So in term, to answer your question, in February, letters, letters go home for any student who is at risk of not graduating on time. Now, it does not include that specific test date and information. And so I will follow up to make sure that, I think the, the suggestion of a individualized letter with the specific testing dates, including the work keys, especially given that we're offering testing so frequently on Saturdays. So I will, I will take that question actually as a suggestion to, to tighten up our letters so that they're more personalized around the actual work keys. Now, I do know that our counselors are, I think they probably could recite this in their sleep. They know exactly which test every kid in their cohort needs to take. And so they, they are constantly making sure kids are registered for the upcoming exams. So, but I will get back to you on when we will get specific letters out regarding testing dates.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and thank you, Dr. Epp. Ms. Dorr?
Good evening. I'll, I just want to say congratulations. So often, when we get a good report, we question the validity of the results, and when we have a bad report, we index on the work we need to do. So I don't really believe in toxic positivity, but I just wanted to say I'm super, super proud of you all. This type of work doesn't happen by chance. It happens by dedicated and focused work. And I just, I think we all really need to celebrate a thirteen, a projected thirteen and a half year-over-year change is tremendous. So congratulations, guys. I just, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we still need to get better at, but this is, this is really exciting. And just a one note, it might be helpful to the board to share our, this is one of our top, our ten goals. And so maybe some background on how we developed the benchmarks around this goal and the reporting around it, I think could be useful to all of us, especially as we're trying to make sure that we're focused on these ten goals and reporting out against them.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr. Thank you so much. We remember when, don't we? So this, this, this is, we thank our children and everyone. Teamwork makes the dream work, and we work together, not against each other, for each other, for our children, which is most important. Before Mrs. Page comes on, okay, I see you, Mr. Cameras. Thank you. Ms. Page, you're next. I know she's jolly.
Jolly is not the word. I am so elated. This information warms my heart. And I want to say thank you for everyone that's listening. I want to thank you to Superintendent Cameras and his team. And more importantly, I want to thank our students, our staff, and the school community that you've gone above and beyond to put in this work. Our children are so resilient because I think Ms. Burke, you stated, and Ms. Dorr, I remember a couple of years ago,
Yes.
the egregious practices of transcripts, the GPAs miscounted of our Latino population, et cetera. This is a breath of fresh air. Yes, we have much more work to do, but my God, this is amazing. And I'm looking forward to seeing one percent on-time graduation. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm gonna stop because I'm, I'm getting emotional.
I know you are. I know you are. Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young, do we have anyone before the superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. White, then Ms. Rizzi.
All right, Ms. White.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Epp, good evening. I have some questions on the Richmond Alternative School, of course, you know, I would probably ask that. That is one of my schools in my district. I heard that you said that you was going to revamp that program, but I didn't see a lot of information on that. So when you start to revamp that program, I'd like to look at it as you go along revamping it. But I did have a question about all the services I heard, the different alternative school services. I want to know, did you ever think about having a alternative for elementary with wraparound services? And the other thing, I'm, I'm gonna ask you all the questions, so then. And I also looked at your cohort's percentage, and it sure looked good. So I'm sure all the schools is going to be accredited, and I'm hoping. So I looked at that, and that was pretty good. But my other question is, students with disabilities. I was curious to know, it brought attention to me, that they had the, one of the highest dropouts also. So what prevented, preventive measures are being taken for students with disabilities? And, let me see, one more question. And my other question, I just wanted to know, I was just curious about this. On one of your last slides, you had economic disadvantages separate by themselves. Why is that? And that was it. That's all my questions.
Yes, thank you, Ms. White. On the elementary program, so on Braz, we'll certainly keep you up to date. We're in the process of, you know, working with Principal Trotter and his, his team. On elementary, yes, this board, this is actually very, quite a discussion from this board last, last spring. And so we are in the process of designing an elementary program for behavioral supports for students. Again, it's meant to be a transitional program, but we're working with Principal Phillips at Amelia Street. And that's very much in progress right now. So we hope to launch that in the fall in some form. So you're right on, right on schedule with that one. For our students with disabilities, just to note, two years ago, we were at thirty-one percent dropout rate. And then last year it was twenty-four percent, and this year it's eleven percent. So we've taken it down quite a bit. I think the factors related to that had to do with a couple of things. One of which is, there was a little bit of an overuse of the applied studies pathway, which is where students are self-contained and they don't take the same type of kind of on-grade level courses. And frankly, I think students were probably bored and not feeling challenged. And we've since strengthened that program itself, but we've also done a lot of work to make sure students are in classrooms with their general education peers, but that they have the right accommodations and supports to help them. So I think we're seeing that data move in the right direction. And then we're also having, I think we've done a lot better job having what we call transition meetings. So this is, actually, we're launching a pretty big effort right now. So when students go from middle school to high school, we're facilitating meetings, and this isn't required by law, it's just good practice. We're facilitating, we're having schools facilitate meetings between their middle school teachers and who they're handing them off to their high school teachers, same thing, fifth grade to sixth grade, so that students aren't just coming in and, and teachers are starting over with no information. So that's one of the preventative things we're putting in place for students with disabilities as well. And then your last question, I believe it was, it was actually English language learners was a separate slide. Economically disadvantaged is a subgroup, and that was on one of our slides. But I, I called out the English language learner. I sometimes get those mixed, just the acronym is very similar. But I called that out because the dropout rate has been so high that we wanted to show specifically the work that George With High School and Huguenot High School did.
Thank you, Ms. White. And Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Epp, for that presentation. It's true. I mean, those numbers do warm my heart, and my heart will become even warmer once those projections turn into realities. And so, you know, hopefully, you know, if we're on track to making those numbers, we actually do. That would be, that would be really exciting. Another thing that actually did warm my heart was attending that mid-year graduation. There were twenty-five students. They're not a huge number, but you know, each and every one, I gave the little elbow that to. Was, you could just sense the excitement in their bodies. They were grateful, they were happy, and their families were proud. And so I actually felt honored to be there and witness that. So, you know, thank you all for that. And that was achieved through the Secondary Success Center, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was, that was actually quite a nice ceremony. So I have a couple of questions. As far as the dropout rate is concerned, you know, were there any demographic or population changes at the schools prior to taking this data? Like, for example, are our numbers of all specific demographic groups stable and unchanged from the last year that we took these counts?
That's a great question, and I can get back to you with some more specific comparisons. I will say that due to rezoning, and I, I know this anecdotally, but I would want to get you specific numbers. I do think George With inherited a few more students who were also, who were English language learners, which is why I think their progress is all the more impressive. And I think Thomas Jefferson inherited a few more students who were economically disadvantaged. Again, and they, they, they too are maintaining and going down in their dropout rate and increasing their progress to graduation. I don't think that there were major shifts elsewhere, but I will get back to you with that question.
So you're not aware of any population declines in any of our schools or like any kind of shifting numbers at all?
No, only the, I think the marginal shifts from rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. You know, you, you talked about the, it's locally, LAVC locally awarded verified credit, is that correct? Okay, and so, you know, I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know how many of our students, you know, get credit that way. But you know, at the beginning, you mentioned that you really want our kids to be career, college, trade school ready, right? Are we tracking students to see where they end up after graduation, or have we started that process? Do we know anything about that at this point?
Yes, we, we track it in a few ways. So first, we start with, our future centers lead this work. They, they begun, they had, during, beginning, middle of senior year, they do an initial survey to gather all the students' intentions. And so they have that baseline data. And then they are going back now this spring and looking at, we've identified key actions that have to be taken for your intent to manifest. So for example, if you said you want to So for example, if you said you want to do the military. If you, say, if you, you said you want to join national service, it's not enough for us to count just that you said that. We're gonna ask you, okay, well, have you met with a recruiter? And have you, when are you taking the ASVAB, as an example? If you indicated a two or four-year college, how many applications have you completed? And is your FAFSA in? Like, kind of milestone activities? If you're looking to join the workforce, have you complete, have you, have you helped you develop a resume? And have you identified five to ten companies that you plan to pursue? And so that's new this year, but that's how we're planning. And then we'll come back in the fall. So when students graduate, making sure we have their contact info. And then we'll come back in the fall and try to make sure to validate, like, did they actually take that step? And there are different strategies we can, while that's optional reporting for student, you know, our alumni. There's different strategies school districts use to kind of keep a pulse on that. And then we'll also pull data from the National Clearinghouse on education statistics for students enrolled in a two and four-year college.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see some serious tracking of that. You know, I'm mostly concerned with, you know, how few of our students get into VCU, right? Or apply, or accepted into VCU. I think that's kind of a shame, and it's frustrating for me. And so I would like to see some more like. Systemic tracking of where our kids end up once they leave.
Absolutely.
And, you know, as a parent of two kids who have matriculated through open high school, I don't think having one student take his time, or her time, or their time, you know. Going through what they have to do is necessarily a bad thing. We don't have to hold them to, like, perfect standards. It's a great, great school, but you know, like, things happen. And so. Yeah, I think it's a wonderful place, and I don't, you know, think one young person, you know, taking their own time.
Were you done?
I am getting there, Ms. Burke. Yes, I'm done.
Okay, no problem. For whatever reason, my computer keeps locking up. Are you all, are you all having that problem? Maybe it's just, nobody else is putting thumbs up and down. Okay, all right. I don't hear anything for a while, then I hear, but go right ahead.
I am done. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Epps.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to add regarding the graduation this past week. Mrs. White also attended, and it was a nice ceremony. As one of the facilitators shared. They changed the date three times. This was the third date. But we still didn't have, we didn't have twenty-five there, but close to it, but they still showed up. And they were so appreciative and looked so nice in their caps and gowns, and I'm just, they're history makers. Because this was the first ever mid-year graduation. So it was truly an opportunity to celebrate. And I like it when we take the time to celebrate. That's, that's a part of the process of growing and getting better at what we're doing. Mr. Young, do we have anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jones, Ms. Page, and then the superintendent.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, everyone. I had a quick comment and then a question for you, Dr. Epps. I also wanted to say that to hear the graduation rates at the level that you presented is amazing. I, being a parent, two years ago of a graduating senior, when you all first started, I remember how crazy everything was. And so to see the effort that is being put in by the administration is amazing. And I want to thank the teachers and the counselors, because they're working overtime to make sure that our students are really getting all that they need. And the quick question that I have for you is for the projected graduation rates. How many students that are possibly failing need either an SOL or have attendance issues? Because I also remember that to be part of the factor, and I believe Mr. Hughes touched on that a little bit before about the waivers and all that. And so I just want to know how does that particularly affect the graduation projected rates?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Jones. So in terms of course failure, the, this data reflects data from semester one. Because that ended a couple of weeks ago. So that accounts for students who failed a course that they may have needed, so the counselors have taken that into consideration. There, there, there may be students included in this projection that graduate, that the counselors are projecting they graduate this summer. Based on a course failure, it still counts as graduation for this year. But that means, it means they're going to summer school for credit recovery. So I can, I can get that, you know, exact number, but I know that. We didn't include students who have no chance of graduating either in June or July. But some students may graduate in July as a result of course failure. Of course, any, we're in second semester, so things can go a little nutty, but I think we see students who've made it this far. You know, they make sure that they're getting the support they need. And again, our counselors track any students who might, they might consider. I don't like the term at risk, but they, they, they track kiddos who might be on the edge, and they kind of stay on top of them. Also, those kids have a graduation coach, so we stay on top of them as well. But we can certainly go back and get exact numbers by school. We'll, we'll continue to get updates every two weeks with our, with our high school principals. And then on the attendance. There are students, there are students who may have had so many absences that historically are policies that you, if you have too many absences, you can't get a credit. But I know that there is an appeal process for that as well. Mr. Hughes, is there anything beyond that you want to say at this point?
No, if you recall, we waived the, we waived the policy this year, so an appeals is not necessary. It's just about competency-based learning. So basically, the child is graded on how they successfully complete the coursework. And that, and that, and attendance is not a factor right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right, Ms. Page, and then our superintendent.
Thank you. So my question. Is regarding the dashboard. And as we move forward, I think it's critical to see, like with. I heard Ms. Rizzi talked about VCU. You know, we have so, so many colleges, you know, such as Hampton, Howard, Union, VCU, I can go on and on. But you sound giving a shout out to my HU. But anyway. I had to digress, but my question seriously, with the dashboard. So as we look at, like, the students attending colleges, I think it's also important that. We track the CTE completers. That have received credentials, because we all recognize that everyone is not. Interested in going to college, but we know going towards the vocational track. The careers are just as valuable as someone graduating from college. Because when you graduate from college, you have a lot of debt versus. Going the vocational track, because we have a lot more skilled jobs than we have skilled workers. So again, as we start moving forward with the dashboard, that's information I think is critical that we can track as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young, are we ready for the superintendent?
Madam Chair, Ms. Rizzi, then the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to slide in. I did have a pretty good conversation with Dr. Phillips today, and I am very excited about the potential of having, like, a wraparound intervention program for elementary-age kids. That is temporary, and that does seek to reintegrate them into their schools after a short period of time. My hope is that there will be lots of support for him, you know, behaviorists, behavior specialists. People who have extensive experience with dealing with kids with these needs. So that he has the support and can find success, and then we don't have to talk about graduation rates anymore. Thank you.
Here, here.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Thank you so much. We thought we had everything in place, was it last school year, year before last? Years ago, there was a program we used to call Baby Wrap. And it took place at Blackwell Elementary. And that addressed the students at the elementary level that needed more support. So I don't know why that, probably because of funding, we weren't able to continue. That was years ago. But. Couple of years ago, this board, we thought we were there, but due to funding, we could not move forward. So I'm sure our children and our families would appreciate that support as well. All right, so Mr. Superintendent, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to very briefly say thank you to Dr. Epps and to Mr. Hughes, who have collaborated on this work. And their teams, our principals, counselors, teachers, and of course, as many of you noted, to our students. In particular, those seventy-one young people who came back. That is not an easy thing to do. And to give it your all and come back in the middle of a pandemic. We should all be extremely proud of them. And those twenty-five who came back in the middle of a pandemic. To get their degree, a couple of them are from the class of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. But they truly define what it means to persevere and truly are an inspiration to all of us. I want to thank Mrs. Burke, Ms. Rizzi, Ms. White for coming and celebrating them. And I'm excited next year to have even more. Hopefully, we'll end up eventually with zero, because nobody will have left in the first place, but until we get them all. I'm, I'm excited to continue that work, continuing to bring back any of our dropouts and ensure that we don't have any in the first place. But this is, this has been three years in the making. We have a long way to go. And we will not rest on our laurels, because there are still significant shortcomings in the data. But I am just very proud of the hard work everyone put in. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership. All right, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, graduation rate. Again, congratulations to RPS. Number five, Administration Business 5.01, receive an update on school calendar 2021-22 reopening dashboard metrics. Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me share my screen. So I am not going to read this all to you, since you, I know have all had a chance to take a look at it, but this is. In response to your request to ensure that we are able to clearly communicate to our stakeholders, to you, to the public, our teachers, our families. Our progress towards being ready to reopen safely in person this coming year, whenever we, we open, whether that's in a traditional calendar or alternative calendar. Regardless, we want to make sure that we are driving towards completion on all of these safety metrics. You can see here, we have a set related to facilities, a set related to supplies and materials. Some related to personnel, and then protocols, which are going to be very important. And then finally, the vaccination rate. So our goal is to get feedback from all of you about these metrics tonight. So that we can finalize a first draft of the dashboard. Which in its initial phase will likely be a color-coded spreadsheet for each of these items for every one of our schools. So that everybody can track our progress towards completion on all of these things. And at every board meeting from now through our reopening, we will provide an update to you, so you can see how things are progressing. My key question tonight is, do you feel we're missing anything? Is there anything that you would like further clarified? We just want to make sure we're being fully responsive to the collective thinking of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Young, do we have any questions at this time?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair. I suspect that will change shortly.
Yes, give us about two more minutes, and I'm sure some questions will come up.
I'll also note, if, if folks want to take some time to absorb and think through, feel free to just email me directly. Glad to hop on the phone with anybody to talk through any of these, or to add things that you feel would be critical. So don't feel any pressure tonight to feel you have to respond. And also, I want to encourage members of the public who are watching, and teachers, family members. If there are things, after reviewing the proposed metrics that you feel should be addressed, please let me know. We'd like to make this as comprehensive as we can. Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, first, Ms. Dorr.
Hi, thank you.
Ms. Dorr, floor is yours.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. So I feel a lot of urgency about getting this created. So I think that having the, the stats at every school is fantastic. But I would love to see even just some high-level statistics district-wide sooner rather than later. So I was hoping to potentially have some of those tonight. I understand you want to get consensus from us, but I don't want the good to be the enemy of the great here. I do think the public, and we need. Some high-level statistics. So I'd encourage us to get that out as soon as possible, and then we can get more granular as we move about the rest of the semester. My, I have two pieces of feedback. One is, there's been a lot of talk recently about the ability to open windows. I know that that is challenging. I know at Binford, as I believe you said, that it took almost a year to get approval to open the windows in a historic building or something like that. But I do, I am reading that there's increasingly more and more evidence slash best practices around the ability to open windows. And I'm wondering if we've thought about that as a district, and if there's any potential for us to add that as part of our reopening plan. And then my second question is around teacher vaccinations. I know when we last spoke, I believe three weeks ago, you said that you believed it was around thirty percent. And that, I've come to learn, is, is low compared to where some of our other teachers are across the region. And I'm wondering if you could speak to why that is, or if we have any plans for getting that upwards, or maybe it is already upwards in the last three weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, so very briefly, on the vaccination rate, it's certainly above thirty percent now. There have been a number of. Events that the state has held. That being said, many of them have also been canceled due to weather. And so I am glad to work with Miss Lee to identify what the latest precise numbers are and share that going forward at every board meeting. And then as for the windows, certainly it's something that. I want to take a look at, though. I, I do want to try to manage expectations. It is, and, and we heard also in some of the public comments tonight that phrases like, we have to renovate all of our schools before we reopen. You know, our facilities need probably about one billion, that's with a B, worth of work to kind of fix everything. That is not all going to be done prior to the start of school, nor do I think it is. Realistic to expect that we would replace all the windows that, that need replacing. As you noted, the, the Binford project itself took over a year for, for many reasons, not the least of which is. There are all kinds of approvals that had to occur, and then the work itself takes quite a bit of time. So we will certainly take a look at the window issue, but I, I don't want the public to come away tonight thinking that every window is going to be replaced before the start of the school year. That is just simply not humanly possible. And so we will look at what are other things we can do to mitigate in cases where that is not, not possible. And that might be a combination of, on top of the bipolar ionization, some in-room filtration units to further support the air quality. But I do want to manage expectations on that, and, and we will provide some additional data on that at our next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Dorr, Mr. Cameras, Mr. White, anyone else?
I think you're referring to Jonathan. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Rizzi.
All right. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I um, uh. Uh, agree with some of the thoughts shared by uh, my colleague, Ms. Door. In that I'm eager to see the dashboard and. Um, and my hope is that, you know, as we're, we're reviewing the dashboard, if there are additional metrics that come up, that the um, administration is amenable to making some, some updates. But uh, I, I think that the, the most important thing is to, to, to share something um, with expediency. Um, and I also would encourage the administration to review other dashboards that many of the other districts have, have shared. Um, and are using as they are uh, considering their reopening plans. Um, uh, on first review, one thing that I, I think stands out um, for me is transportation. Um, you know, I, I, so I guess. What I, I think is important for us to consider is, you know, and we haven't really talked about this, but I believe the assumption is, is that in the fall, we will have in-person school five days a week. Um, and that is certainly the hope I, of, you know, of all of us. Um, and so um, if we are in school in person five days a week, you know, are there other mitigating, you know, is that just going back as usual? Or is there going to be some type of social distancing? Like what, what does that actually look like? Um, because I think unless we know what that looks like, we can't prepare. So um. So, you know, we had many buses that were overcrowded, you know, will we have enough buses in order to be able to, you know, accommodate all of the students that are on them? And, and are there any other concerns with any, um, you know, with, with, with being overcrowded, particularly as we enter the new year? Um, it's not, it's not okay to have things necessarily as they were before, um, given the state of the world. So, so I think that, you know, putting definition around what does reopening look like? Um, and, and um, considering, you know, you know, all of those aspects, is it? Um, you know, may uh, you know, things that may be considered as we move forward. Um, uh, another thing that stands out too, as we talk about the bathrooms, so. Um, you know, obviously we want to fix all the bathrooms, but there are certain things that I think are particularly important. One is that we have hot water in all of the sinks. And um, and another is that there are soap dispensers that are able to be filled and, and used at each of the sinks. So. Um, so I think that uh, highlighting that is important as well. Um. And to have some sense of what uh, you know, what our headcount is projected to be at the start of the school year. Um, you know, where we are from a personnel standpoint overall. Um, you know, obviously we want to have additional nurses in the building, but if, if there had been any uh, staffing changes, you know, I think that's something we need to keep an eye on as well. Oh, one other thing. Um, I wanted to know, as it pertains to having teachers vaccinated. Um, you know, is that something we can ask? Yeah, you know, is it permissible to, for us to actually find out how many teachers have been vaccinated? And um, if not, you know, I think I would also be amenable to see. Um, you know, just the, you know, are we at, when are we at a point when all of our staff, school staff has the, um, has access to the vaccine? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Uh, Mr. Cameras, did you want to respond to any of that now? Shall we move on?
Um. You know, I'll take all that, that feedback and, and certainly, Ms. Gibson, I think. Uh, your point around um, continuing to iterate as we move forward is, is a very good one, and. Absolutely, that's, that's the approach uh, we will take. And um, then we'll find out more about um. You know, when VDH feels. We could reasonably say that all staff have had the opportunity uh, to be vaccinated. We're not there yet, certainly. Um, but let me try to get that information for the board.
Thank you. Ms. Rizzi?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, well, you know, actually, Ms. Door and um, Ms. Gibson both said exactly what I wanted to say, but like. I can add, you know, I think that high-level statistics on the dashboard, you know, we really do need those, and of course, I'm sure this thing can be adjusted and you can add. You know, and adjust as you need as we hear, because I think constituent responses are going to be really important. I mean, there, there are lots of our constituents who have expertise in areas that we don't. Um, or who know things that we don't necessarily know about, you know, what they want to see on a dashboard, because this is really for them. Um, but you know, I was thinking things like the vaccination rate, COVID rate, um. Um, aggregate numbers on where we stand as a district in terms of readiness, what might be things that we could put up immediately and then start to build later on. But yeah, I agree, there needs to be something up there really with the parents and, and our stakeholders are. Are really anxious to see um, what the reopening plan is and that we've made progress toward it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Harris Mohammed, then Ms. White.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cameras, is there Plexiglas currently installed in the schools? And if not, can you? Um, inform us about that process, and you want to answer that, or you want me to go to the next question? With your pleasure.
Um, I'll answer it. Yes, we do have Plexiglas now in all front offices.
Awesome. In, in front offices?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any intention to place them in classrooms?
That's something that we'll have to discuss as, as a, as a board.
As a governing body. Okay, thank you. And then the next one is a comment question. Um, my colleague, Ms. Door, spoke about. Asking for a high-level statistics. Explain how that will be accomplished. Um. Because so o- o- often you have shared with us, Mr. Cameras, that the division. Has antiquated data systems. So, and, and I've asked about data. The public has known I've asked about data. And a variety of forms to include subgroups. So how are we going to satisfy, if you will, Ms. Door's request of. Obtaining high-level statistics when, I don't know, oftentimes I couldn't get just basic. Statistical data in a subgroup. I'm just curious. If you can answer that, I appreciate it.
Sure. Um, so let's take the, the bathrooms, for example. So we are maintaining. As, as you have seen, um, a spreadsheet of all the bathrooms. So it doesn't sit in one of our quote-unquote antiquated systems, it just sits in an Excel spreadsheet. So what we'll do to meet uh, uh, the board's um, desire to see the aggregate numbers, and. I do want to note, that was always our intention, we just wanted to make sure that you also saw the school by school numbers. Is we can just use a, a, a formula from the Excel spreadsheet to tell us, okay. Uh, across the school division, what percentage of our bathrooms are now. At an inappropriate level to return to school? So we can show you that school by school, and we can show you that at the, at the school level, I mean, at the division level.
Madam Chair, a follow-up, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Can, can we start looking at using the spreadsheet for? Um, I don't know how it's currently calculated because I haven't seen the, the breakdown, and I do recognize it's a lot of work. But I, I also recognize that some of this information can be pulled from Aspen. So some of the data that I particularly has asked for. Um, Dr. Epps has worked diligently in providing a lot of that this evening, but the other information. If, if we could possibly get that in the Excel spreadsheet, pop it up in there and. Provide that, that, that may be, I'm just making a, I'm just making a suggestion to. Because I don't know how you all keep your benchmark data. I, I don't know, but I've asked for that before and just curious. But thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Who was after Dr. Harris Mohammed? I didn't write it down, Mr. Young.
Ms. White.
All right, Ms. White.
Um, Mr. Cameras, I have a couple of questions. I'm just going to ask them. Um. My break, I would like to see a breakdown of, I know everybody is saying of teachers. But I'm interested also in your uh, support services. Um, the janitors, the food service workers, all of those who are going to be. In the schools with the children daily. Um, have they taken their vaccination? And I also would like a breakdown on the transportation. That is uh, one thing that I'm really concerned about. Um, and I had this uh, conversation with Maggie Walker, of course. And I know that there is like twelve students to a bus. And I don't think that um. Buses is the question, but we do have some old buses. That need to either be replaced. Or, and, and the biggest thing that uh, RPS has, and not only RPS, all the localities also have. Did not have enough bus drivers. So if we're um. How would we uh, put twelve students in one bus? Based on the large number of schools, I mean, students that we want to return back to school. And what I would like to see is a reopening guide for parents. That's something that as I would like to see as a parent. I want to see all your safety protocols. And your mitigations that you will be using. Um, because you have so many students who live with uh, guardians, grandparents. And they would like to know what is going on, and everybody you may cannot reach. Just by a survey, you need to have a reopening guide for the parents. And also, I would like to know about the plans on contact tracing. How is that going to be uh, handled? And also ventilation with the new buildings. I know everyone said because they're new buildings, that don't mean they have the proper ventilation. Those are the things that I am very much interested in um, in the returning of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead. Yes, thank you.
Um, so absolutely, we um, uh, much as we did when we opened up this past fall, are going to be putting out. Um, a whole uh, slew of communication materials um, from print to video and, and, and much more, much more. So. Um, absolutely. As for your question about the vaccine, um. W- when I use the word teacher, I'm being imprecise, so I apologize. Uh, I'm really speaking broadly about um, our staff. I will say, though, that our frontline staff, our transportation workers. And our nutrition workers who are working in person right now. Uh, they were prioritized for vaccination. They were put at the very front of the line. Um, and so their rate. So I can say this with a high degree of, of confidence, that they have had the opportunity uh, to get a, a vaccine. Now, some of them have declined for can, you know, reasons of, of personal concern. Um, but we put them at the front of the line. Um, and so now teachers and other staff who are not largely in person right now, um, are coming, coming after them.
Thank you. Mr. Young, anyone else?
Madam. Madam Chair, you're up next.
Thank you, thank you so much. Ms. White also addressed um. One of the questions that I had, but I, I would like to, I like the idea of the parent guide. That's, that's. An excellent idea, strategy. I'm concerned about the, um, you have listed. Protocols. What exactly are the protocols? If that's getting too much into it, but I, right now, I'm visualizing if a teacher has twenty students. In his or her classroom, returning, the number would be smaller. So what's the plan of action per se? It's going to take some creative, creative, out-of-the-box thinking in terms of. Um. Addressing our enrollment. And for those students that choose, if we do go back in September, which I hope that we do go back August, September, July, whenever. Um. There will be some families that have made it clear, they're not return, they don't want to return yet. Until everybody in their family may have had the vaccination. Or because of other family members in their home, in a, in a, in a generational family. My question is just when you have on your, I'm not asking you to answer it now, but just to think about it. But I'd like to really be able to visualize returning twelve students, fifteen students, whatever, on a bus. Um, just, just how the day is going to unfold. In terms of how many students are in a classroom, how many, how, of course, the desk will be what, six feet, four feet, whatever? Just, just would like to see what the protocols are. So um, so far as continuing to get the data for the dashboard. I'm ready to move forward with it. And as you stated, uh, Mr. Cameras, any other suggestions to send them to you so we can get this rolling?
A- and if I may just briefly uh, speak to the point that you raised about. You know, is it twelve students? Is it twenty students? Um, you know, w- we are like all divisions around the country eagerly awaiting. The CDC's sort of updated guidance for the fall. Because um, there are some indications that they will come out with guidance saying. That the social distancing may not be necessary once everyone is vaccinated. And you're wearing masks, that the, the data shows that transmission. Is extremely low once everyone's been vaccinated and everyone's wearing masks. Um, and that the social distancing is no longer necessary at that point. So. Obviously, if they continue to maintain the requirement of six feet or three feet, um, that's one. Path that we would have to prepare for, but if they change that, it's obviously a very different picture. So we are uh, doing all that contingency planning right now.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. So I do hope consensus is in place that you're going to move forward with that so that we can, thank you. Thank you so much. And that will be public as well. Five point zero two, the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Calendar, Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, be- before I dive into this, I, I, I do want to just say a few things. Um, uh, to be responsive to some of the um, public comment that we received tonight. Um, I, I do want to be absolutely clear that this is by no means. Um, a, a scientific survey. Um, nor was it ever intended to be. This is the exact same survey process that we used. And was widely, um, I think, supported. When we made the decision in December to remain virtual. Um, that was a survey that was open broadly, that did not track individual responses and, and such. And so. Um, you know, I think any of the critiques that are being made of, of the survey this time around. Um, would just as easily have applied to the survey that time around. Um, and, and so I, I do want to just make sure that, that that is clear to the public. Second. Um, one of the reasons we don't. Uh. Uh, administer the survey directly, for example, to a teacher's email account. Is because of concerns about anonymity. So the reason we do it this way is that so folks feel comfortable. Knowing that there's no way to track back to who provided the response. And that is something we've heard time and again that um, our, our families and teachers um, value very significantly. Uh, we can, of course, change our survey methods going forward, um, and send things directly to email addresses that are known. Um, but of course, that, that changes the calculus a little bit on that front. Um, and then last, I, I, I want to note, in terms of the number of responses we've received. Um, certainly, you know, roughly two thousand families is a, a, a very small percentage of our overall family population. Absolutely. Um, I do want to note, for our survey in December. When we made the decision to remain virtual, largely based on a survey, uh, we received about three thousand responses. Um, so certainly more than we've received right now, but nowhere near a majority of our families. I also want to note, on the, on the teacher's side, we've received responses from about fifty percent of our staff. So it was a rather uh, significant. Uh, sample of our educators. Um. And then last, uh, uh, or additionally, um, as, as this presentation shares, on the family's side. Uh, families of color are underrepresented. Um, I was very forthright about this and have noted. Uh, that we need to do more to, to gather that feedback. But I also want to note that when we uh, look at the data at the highest level. Um, by race or uh, uh, look at white versus families of color, the responses are actually fairly similar. Um, and so I shared that information. To s- to say that even though the survey is not fully representative, and what we're seeing from each. Uh, of the racial categories is, is fairly consistent. Um. So with that, let me just, just share as, as um, I'm not going to go through all the, the calendar pieces right now. Um, but do you want to just go over what we uh, saw? Um, and so the first question to our families. Uh, simply stated, please take a moment to review the proposed calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year next year. Uh, using this link, and that was linked to the calendar. How comfortable are you with this calendar? Um, and so here you can see uh, on the very uncomfortable and uncomfortable end. Uh, we were at a, a total of thirty-six percent. Twenty percent in the middle at not sure. Um, and then at. twenty percent in the middle at not sure, um and then at the very comfortable and comfortable and forty-three percent. Um, I was very careful in, in my language. I have never said that a majority of families have articulated that they're comfortable or very comfortable. Um, I use the word plurality uh because that is what this data shows. Um, more families in the survey uh indicated a comfort level than did not indicate comfort. Um, and and so I was merely reflecting what the data shows. Um, I, I actually think that's rather noteworthy um that despite what we have heard in public comment, uh when you look across uh two thousand responses, uh more families uh are indicating a comfort level than are indicating a lack of comfort. Uh, and then next, the next question asked, if your RPS students were identified as needing additional support, how likely would you be to send them to the additional days of school? Which we noted were the blue days on the calendar. And here, I think it's very striking, nearly half, forty-nine percent of our families said that they would be likely or very likely. Um, I do wanna know, we're, we're only um targeting five thousand students, which is um basically twenty percent. Um, but here we see fifty percent saying that they would, they would be likely to, to want to send their kids. Um, and then on the other end, um, and you'll see uh uh thirty percent at the very unlikely or unlikely. Then turning to our staff, uh, similar question, please take a moment to review the proposed calendar for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year next year using this link. How comfortable are you with this calendar? And you'll see here, again, a plurality, not a majority, but a plurality of our staff said uh that they would be very comfortable or comfortable at uh thirty-nine percent. Um, and on the other end, very uncomfortable or comfortable, uncomfortable at thirty-three percent with about twenty-seven percent uh in the middle. So uh by no means uh is this definitive. Um, but again, I do think it is noteworthy that uh amidst uh all the challenges of this current year that more staff members are indicating a comfort level with this significant change than um are, are indicating a, a lack of comfort. I do think that is important to note. And then finally, asking teachers um if they would uh uh while I read the question for teachers, how likely would you be to choose to work the additional days of school? The days in blue on the calendar, please note that you would receive ten thousand dollars in additional compensation. Um, and here, uh thirty-five percent likely or very likely and forty percent very unlikely or unlikely. Again, I think this is, is noteworthy. Clearly, um more teachers uh would not want to work the extra days than would want to work the extra days. Um, but because of the way this is designed, that is okay. Um, we would only need about uh twenty-five or so percent of our teachers to volunteer. Uh, and here we have thirty-five percent saying that they would be very likely or likely to do so. Uh, with that, I will pause and and take any questions. I, I, I do uh believe this um this data indicates uh uh that we should continue to uh move forward with gathering uh input and feedback on this. I think if the numbers were uh flipped or were even more significant, um, that they would be more definitive, but I do think we should continue uh to press forward with some of the um uh town halls that we're hoping to do over the next uh two weeks. Uh, continue to push in terms of gathering more feedback, particularly from families of color. Um, and then make a decision at our next school board meeting on March fifteenth.
Mr. Young, do we have any questions?
We do. Yes, ma'am. First, Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. Ms. Gibson.
All right, Ms. Rizzi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really don't wanna be defining the ointment here. I, you know, I'm kinda feeling like I'm falling into that pattern and I don't want to. I wanna be happy and I don't wanna like always spoil stuff, but I do have some questions, you know, um. Poor methodology is poor methodology, whether you used it in December or right now. Um, I was not on the board in December, and if I had been, I would have made comment about that. Um, this is not necessarily um data that I would even let my students use in their freshman research. Uh, uh, uh investigative and argumentative essays primarily because of the small sample size, right? That are automatically draws some question about its validity and the fact that respondents can um fill in more than one response also concerns me to some degree. I don't know that we can be sure that this represents the responses of more than fifty percent of our faculty and staff just simply because we have no way of telling whether people submitted multiple responses. I'm wondering if there's a statistician on staff who can help with that, those kinds of things so that we don't have to deal with this in the future so that the data is more reliable and that we don't have to like question it or, you know. Um, our stakeholders um don't have as many questions because things are transparent. And then also the data is gathered in a way where there are fewer holes and and problems. Um. You know, I, I, I definitely wanna make sure that we're getting a good pulse on what our stakeholders want. And I'm worried about this survey in terms of its effectiveness in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Excuse me, Ms. Rizzi. Mrs. Gibson is next, I believe. Is that correct? Ms. Gibson?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I, I, I share the um sentiment of my colleague, Ms. Rizzi. You know, I, I did have concern with the data um and the methodology in the last survey. In fact, I mentioned um in our last meeting that I had some hesitation um because the survey highlighted that there wouldn't be transportation, and so that might also skew the numbers. Um, you know, but I, I think that the difference also between that survey and this one is that we haven't seen the same discrepancy between the feedback that we've gotten from public comment and also just, you know, reading dialogues of, of that people are having online and then the data that we're seeing in this survey. And so um, so I think it's understandable that, that folks are, are questioning those, um, you know, those numbers, knowing that um, you know, we're not seeing the same, um, you know, the same uh kind of point of view expressed both in, in that survey and um and and folks that are, are reaching out and and sharing concerns that they have on the proposal. Um, the other thing I think that is different between that um survey and this one is simply that there were more options on the table. Um, you know, so when we talked about our reopening, you know, there are many different scenarios, whether um we allowed folks to weigh in on. Um, you know, there was uh, you know, where certain grades were going back, where um, you know, there was a all-day-a-week. So, so there were more things for people to provide input on, whereas now, um, you know, we really only provided one option. And so I do think that there is uh understandable interest in, in seeing how we can better support our students in the next school year, given the fact that we have been virtual this year. Um, and we've only provided one choice. And so um I want to repeat my request to explore all other options. Um, I think uh I would be particularly interested in seeing, you know, what a more um expanded summer school program would look like if not this summer, then the summer after the next school year, um so that more families are able to access that program. Um, you know, can we add, you know, a, a few days, a week to the school calendar for all students? Um, you know, what are, what are, what is, you know, you know, just some, some other choices. I, I would like to provide other choices um to those students. And I think, um, you know, eh eh, the concern that folks have about the ability to implement such a change in this timeframe is, is understandable. And what I, what I don't want to see happen is, um, you know, this idea of a full-year school, there could be some merit to it. Um, but I don't under, it's, it's, it doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't try a pilot first. We've, we've, you know, this, this isn't something, you know, there's research, but we haven't tested it. Like, we should try it before we are changing the lives of, you know, twenty-five thousand students. So, so let's look at the possibility of a pilot. Um, and uh, you know, I, I think lastly, let's uh, you know, let's allow folks to have the peace of mind to, to know what next year is going to be like. Um, and uh I think respect the fact that folks are, you know, understandably concerned because we haven't, you know, been able to, you know, we didn't get the bathroom blitz done in the year. We didn't, um, you know, have a dashboard readily available at the start of the school year. We didn't. Um, y- you know, we, 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 we had the idea for pairing and and what would have happened with that. So, so I don't, I don't want us to take this bad idea and have folks sour on it. My hope is that we put some ideas on the table that are, that are truly um viable and um and continue to explore a full year and and look at a, at a pace that um allows everyone to be able to adapt and and plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, Ms. White, then Dr. Harris Mohammed.
All right.
Mr. Cameras, um. Our last conversation, our last meeting, um, all of you probably knew I was against the actual survey. And I was one of the ones who took the survey, so I can say that you can take it more than one time. Uh, there was no parameters. There was no mention of different plans. I think one of the colleagues said I was expecting something that least had. Was there a traditional plan, a hyper-plan, a two-year, I mean, um, a year-round plan? I didn't see any of that. And um I did look at the community engagement. I was wondering why uh I didn't get a robo-call to tell me to take a survey. I get a robo-call for everything else, but I didn't get one for this survey. And if we, you were looking for um African-American representation, that would have been one things that you would have looked at because we know that as a pandemic, you just can't go out to um people homes. Uh, but like I said, I didn't care for a number four on your question because it has specific criteria that was irrelevant to the actual um survey. And it looked just like what you said. Y'all used it in December, so it was no effort to change anything. You just put it right back out because I felt that you could have probably used student IDs or teacher IDs, where you wouldn't have to go into their mailbox. Um, and if this, if this survey is to stay out there, I hope something is, um, some of these things are added. And even a filter is added because you can't take it more than one times. So I wouldn't think that this survey is even valid because I'm not sure who took those, um, based on your biography, who was those uh people who took those surveys. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cameras, for this. Have a couple of questions, and again, at your pleasure, how you wanna answer them, if you want me to do one by one or. Um, Mr. Cameras, have we completed a soft enrollment?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Have we completed a soft enrollment for either reopening discussion? Has your team completed a soft enrollment?
I'm not sure I understand. Can you explain a little bit more?
I, I can. A soft enrollment, for example, is when you ask your building level administrators to um complete information to indicate if students are desiring to return on a hybrid model or face-to-face model um in this situation. And the reason why I'm asking that is based on the survey that went out. I don't know anything about the survey in December, so I can't speak to something that I didn't see or know anything about. Um, that's not my place to discuss, but the building has a better control or more valid control, if you will, over who, when, will return to the school, when we return to the school. That is called a soft enrollment that Virginia Department of Education has often used in superintendent memos or um their webinars or what have you. So that's why I was asking if that has been done. Um, also, it is my understanding that a robo-call went out around six P M. tonight. I probably didn't get it because I don't have any students in Richmond City Public Schools. Um, but can you speak to that very quickly? Did a robo-call go out tonight?
I, I, I can't speak to that specifically. I do know we've had texts go out, but I can find out what exactly has gone out and and what times.
Okay, my next question. Um, I am very concerned too about the validity of the survey. If multiple people can take the survey, and this is just my math mind, because I was a mathematics teacher for a very long time. This is just my math mind. That gives us a false positive on our data in the denominator. And so if the, if someone is taking the survey multiple times, then that's going to mess with the percentages surely because they're taking it multiple times. And so two thousand and thirty-three, I think I saw the number, I may be off five or six people. But two thousand and thirty-three surely is not indicative of the twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand students that we have currently enrolled in Richmond City Public Schools. Nor, and and then two thousand, um, two thousand and thirty-three does not justify analytically the decision to do one thing or the other, right? And so I just want us to really think about how we're going to address that as, as a team. Um, do we wanna continue to move in that direction of submitting surveys like that to our community and parents and students and staff? Or do we wanna look at a more comparable way of getting the feedback that I know we all would like to have to make informed decisions? I just would like for us to think about that because it's critically important. Again, as a math, as a, I'm always a teacher, as a person who taught mathematics for years and not just middle school math. I taught A P Calculus and Statistics and all of that. Data, data tells the story. And so when you present to us or this information that you presented to us, and thank you for that, based on the information that was pr- presented through the survey, Mr. Cameras, clearly, um, we had, there should be some concern to say the, with, um, the word that you, that you used that people are comfortable based on the word that you use, the ad- adjective, it could be a verb to, that you use. This is the, the, the decision that we're going to make. And I just want us to think about that because I have concerns about that. I also want to bring, um, or just repeat what you said, that the updated CDC guidelines to reopen in the fall has not happened. So that would then lead me to, why would we have a discussion of a year-round calendar when we haven't put all the other factors in place? I just want us to think about this, and I am gonna say this again, no matter how people feel about this phrase, you gotta go slow to go fast. And it seems like we're trying to do the work on the back end to match the front end, and the front end is not even clear, okay? Two thousand families is a very small percentage or two thousand individuals, and I think we can do better to receive accurate data because here we go. If tw- two thousand and thirty-three people took the survey, and let's just say we have twenty-three thousand students as of nine oh nine P M., that's zero point zero eight eight percent. I'm just trying to understand how we justify a plan based on that very small number that's not identified on a number scale. Last thing. Um. Nevermind, I'm gonna stop right there. Thank you, Mr. Cameras. Can you talk to that last point about the last two points about the data points, the percentages, and talk about what you can talk about?
Sure.
And I appreciate that.
Sure. Um, uh, I, I do wanna just make one clarification. Uh, I, I do believe, um, you know, about two thousand families represents um about ten percent of the um student population. Uh, given that we're a little bit over uh twenty thousand. Um, and and look, uh, as I said at the outset, and I will continue to say, I don't I would not represent this as a scientific um survey. Um, I never uh represented it as such, um, but it is the methodology that we have been using. Um, I am more than happy to explore an alternative approach going forward, for example, where we would require families to enter a student ID number um to verify that they are parents. For example, where we would require families to enter a student ID number to verify that they are parents. That has downsides too, that some families would feel very uncomfortable about doing that. We could similarly have teachers enter their employee ID number to be able to verify that, that they are in fact employees. But that has downsides as, as I know many of our employees have shared with you and, and with me, their concerns about being able to, to share information and having it tracked back to them. So, look, there are advantages and disadvantages. I am representing the data as it is. As it is, as imperfect as it is. And as it says right now, with a significant number of respondents and, and by significant, again, my, my benchmark is our December survey, which was our high water mark, right? And, and I, I think that, that was the largest number of respondents we've ever had, was I think a little bit over 3,000. And so I think compared to that, you know, we're, we're, we're getting close to that. But look, I, I, I wouldn't rely solely on, on survey data. I think we have to do more engagement over the next two weeks, which is why I think we should continue to do that and see where things stand two weeks from now and, and then make a decision. Last, let me just say, you know, the, one of the reasons that I'm bringing this proposal is because I was charged by the board to do so. I do, I do want to make sure that that the public is aware that this is something that the board has talked about for, for some time. And Dr. Harris Mohammed, I do want to be sensitive to your comments you've made in the past that that, you know, occurred before your time on the board and others on the board. And so I, 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 I do want to acknowledge that. But it was something that has been discussed and ultimately the board voted to charge the administration to come up with a, a year-round plan for the school system. That's why we did it. Now, I also think it, it is an appropriate response to COVID. I think it is something that would benefit our students and frankly, I think benefit our teachers as well. You know, I see, I, I'm not going to be shy about where I stand on this. I think it is a good thing. I I believe, you know, we talk, all, everyone in education talks a lot about equity. And the shorthand we use for equity is making sure that the kids who need the most get the most. And I can't think of anything more powerful than giving the kids who need the most seven more weeks of instruction. Now, is that easy to do? No. Is it uncontroversial? No. Is it going to cause discomfort and change of schedules? Absolutely. And I am empathetic to all of that as superintendent and as a parent. But I am charged by this body to do the very best I think we should do for our kids. And that is why I bring this to you and is why I, I believe in it. Is it the only way to respond? No, of course not. There are no silver bullets in education and anyone who says there are is lying to you. But I do think this has the power to make a dramatic impact on our kids and to help teachers who want it, only who want it, to make $10,000 more per year. And so, look, I, I am passionate about this. If the board ultimately decides no, I understand. And then we'll go forth and put together another proposal. But, you know, I'm bringing to bear my expertise as an educator, my knowledge of the system and, and some data while not definitive and not scientific, that indicates perhaps surprisingly that more families and more teachers seem to be comfortable with this than not. And so with, with all, with all humility, I, I, you know, that is, is, is what I, I, I'm bringing forth. And, you know, like, let's continue to explore. Let's get feedback. Let's, let's hear from folks. And then let's make a decision on March 15th so that everybody can start planning their lives and we can focus 100% on reopening with love, maybe reopening with love, the remix, part two.
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, I have a follow-up if I may.
Let me do one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do want, I am going to come back to you, but Mr. Young, is anyone else listed? Besides me?
Yes, ma'am. Ms., Ms. Door and then Ms. Page.
They will come back to you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Ms. Door?
Thank you. Um, uh, so welcome back, Dr. Harris. We're so happy to have you back and we have missed, we have missed you. And I do think that this is a change and change is hard and change is hard for the community to wrap their heads around, et cetera. And surveys have been but one tool that we've historically used in the past around communicating these changes. So I really want, I know we don't have a ton of time and we're trying to do a lot in advance of the new year, but I really do think it's important that we, we find additional methods to get community feedback. So I liked Ms. White's idea, I believe, of making sure that there's a robo-call, encouraging people to fill out the survey. And I wanted to follow up specifically on my request to find a date for some town halls so that we can interface directly with the public. I think that to, to some folks, they, you know, that are just reading about this in the paper, it just might seem like, oh, we're just coming back two weeks early, right? Or we're, or, you know, they're cutting our summer shore or they're trying to do too much. And I think that it's really important that the public hears from the administration and the expertise that you, we have hired you all to, you know, to, to bring to bear to our city, to, to communicate your vision and to receive real authentic feedback from the community. There are some very valid concerns. And I think it's incumbent on us to, to not just read about them, but to hear from them directly. So anyways, would, would really love to see us schedule those town halls. My recommendation is one in the West End, one in East End, North Side and South Side, but I'm open to whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Door. Ms. Page?
If, if I may, oh.
Oh, sure. Please, yes.
I was gonna share that there is a South Side one already scheduled, but go ahead, Ms. Page, if you'd like to share that. And Ms. Jones?
Yeah, Ms. Jones, okay. Ms. Page?
Yes, um. I have a question. Superintendent Cameras. And before I, um, my colleague in the Nap District, before we share our information. But I do have a question. Do we have evidence that there are multiple respondents or responders filling out these surveys? And if so, where is the evidence?
I am not aware of evidence one way or the other. What I can do is consult with our tech team to see if there's a way for them to figure that out. And I will certainly report that back. But I don't know of anyone who has taken it multiple times. That doesn't mean there, there may not be someone. I think most people you know, are, are respectful of the process and, and aren't sitting at their computers filling it out dozens of times, but, but, but I'll check and see if there's a way for us to know.
Yes, because we keep, I keep, we keep, we keep repeating the same thing over and over. And if there is evidence, then we need to see the evidence that people are, you know, repeatedly taking this survey over and over. And then my next question. I am concerned because this data appears to be questionable, but then we have other data that is received positively. And also, some of our comments are not reflective of our entire community. And so what I want to be clear about that, we have a very diverse school system. And I want to keep it real and be honest. Again, all of our comments are not reflective of our entire community because I know for sure that the 8th and the Nap District, we are very diverse in the 8th and the Nap District. But again, I just wanted to be clear that the comments really don't reflect the entire community. And we have to be honest with ourselves. But I, I really would like to see, receive information, the evidence that we have multiple people or we have the same person or persons taking the survey over and over again.
I can certainly see if it is possible for us to determine that and we'll share whatever we find with the board. But I also want to make sure you announce the South Side Town Hall.
Oh, yes. Again, um, yes, on March 11th, we are planning to have a community conversation for the 8th and the Nap District because we want to engage our parents in the school community to receive feedback about this process. I mean, we've talked, we've heard from parents, we've heard from principals, teachers. So, um, yeah, so March 11th, we have a town hall meeting for members of the 8th and the Nap District. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Page. I didn't hear the 7th District and the 7th District did ask for a date, so I guess I'll get that tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
We did talk briefly about that. So, and I so enjoy, I'd like to see how creatively this Dr. Harris is back as well. Did you want to speak to that, Dr. Harris? This is her first day back?
Uh, no, I was just gonna say I look forward to working with everyone to diversify our engagement efforts.
Thank you so very much. And again, we're glad that you are back. Welcome back. Dr. Harris Mohammed, back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Cameras, help me. Was the numerator the number of people who took it or was that the denominator? You know, my math mind won't let this go. And I think you can relate because you taught math for so many.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
So the denominator is the number of people who took it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I appreciate that. I had flipped it. So, no, I appreciate that. And then please, I'm, I'm willing to host one. I mean, that's a great idea. Ms. Page mentioned it, I think, two meetings ago. And because the 6th District is lovely, weird in a, in a very nice way, the South and the North of the James, I'm willing to work with any of my board colleagues. So I won't have to host one alone, but you can shoot me, your team can shoot some dates like Ms. Burke indicated. And I am more than willing because I think this, this is awesome to get additional engagement and more data points. And I just wanted to, to say that when the link was sent to me, I took the survey like three times. And so, I, I mean, I'm one, I'm like this small of a decimal point, but I just wanted, yes, it can happen because I did. So, but also I don't know if we can get, the question that Ms. Page had is very valid, the evidence. But because no one put in like employee number or student ID number, I don't know how we will be able to get that. But that, that's just my thought. If we can, that is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. You want to continue on with this or? Mr. Cameras?
Madam Chair.
Yes, is someone else?
Yes, ma'am, if I may. Ms., Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. White, then Ms. Page.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Yeah, I would love to hold some kind of town hall listening session. I didn't know that that was something we could do on our own. I am really interested in figuring out ways to diversify the audience. A lot of my parents that I know of don't do Zoom, right? You know, we've got to figure out ways to get to people where they are so that they can engage. And so anybody who has ideas, creative ideas for how to do that in a way that, you know, reaches people who aren't really tech savvy and who don't do like a lot of the electronic stuff we do, I'd, I'd really appreciate it. But yeah, I'd like to get on that as soon as possible. Thank you.
So it sounds like, Mr. Cameras, each area would like to host, however, together. So I know you'll, you'll work that out. And Dr. Harris, as I stated, who's so creative, we had 170 different meetings, gatherings. I'd like to see what you're going to utilize this time though to encourage people to be a part of this. I know it'll be phone calls and all the rest. So, and it does make a difference. It does make a difference with the agencies, the different groups that you had to help us to make sure. And this is a short notice. But I'm sure we'll talk about this tomorrow during our agenda meeting too. So, very good. Thank you so much. And Ms. White had a comment and then Ms. Page?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Since everyone was talking about meetings, I would like to have one also, Ms. Arias. I would like to, we have about five or six civic associations in the 2nd District. I would like for you to come to the civics associations in 2nd District or maybe send out a newsletter or combine it with the city council's newsletter or one of the school board's newsletters. And also on the actual survey, I did take it twice. I took it for myself and my husband. So I guess you, I don't know if they can look up your IP address and see how many times you took it. But I did take it twice, but it's two individuals in my household. So I just didn't take it to see if it just wouldn't work. But I do know you can take it several times. That's all I had to say on that.
Thank you, Ms. White. Ms., Ms. Page?
Yes. So I guess just my comment. So if people are able to take it twice or whatever have you, is this an isolated situation or is this a school-wide division problem that we are having? So that's my only comment. So I'm looking forward to seeing the evidence. Thank you.
Mr., um, excuse me. Mr. Young, anyone else listed?
Madam Chair, if, if, if yours truly may speak briefly to the proposal?
Yes.
I would, well, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I have since at least July, regularly spoken advocacy of calendar changes specific to a, a year-round or something akin to a, a year-round. And most frequently, I have addressed the, the real evidence in favor of, of year-round for the benefit of our students. But this evening, and I'm really, I'm pleased that the superintendent said at the tail end of his remarks what he did. Because I think at least yours truly, I'll just speak on my behalf, I've, I've been remiss to not address the, the other real beneficiary of this proposal and, and that regards our teachers. I would contend that there are all kinds of benefits, including flexibility related to this proposal. But we regularly as a board speak to, and we speak in unison when we address our objective to augment teacher pay and, and to put more money in, in the pockets of those folks who are most deserved of it, i.e. our teachers and folks in our, in our buildings, on the front lines, providing invaluable service to our students. I, like, like others, will not be shy, and I'm not shy, about a, an opportunity, a proposal that would provide a significant increase in pay, $10,000 a year to our teachers, those folks who, who work so tirelessly day in, day out. Madam Chair, with, with that, I will yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Cameras? Is there more to be discussed regarding the calendar at this point?
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, then we can move on to six board action items. And I'm looking at 6.01 received for action, spring 2021 reopening proposal. So you have that for us at this time, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Alright, um, so if we can kind of reverse the clock from next year and focus on uh, the remainder of this year, uh, we need to make a decision about how we proceed for this spring. Uh, as you know, in December, the school board uh, upon my recommendation, voted to remain fully virtual for the rest of the school year. Given that, we planned for a late summer or early fall reopening, uh, not a spring one. Um, but as you know, the governor issued an expectation uh, several weeks ago that all school divisions in Virginia would provide in-person instruction beginning on March fifteenth. In response to that, we provided you uh, on February sixteenth with a uh, very limited proposal that would bring back uh, or offer uh, to a hundred of our highest need students the opportunity to come back in person. Uh, we heard some feedback from uh, our community and from some of the board members that they would like to see a a little bit uh, more than that initial proposal. Uh, and so what I'm bringing forward to you tonight uh, is an expansion of that proposal. Uh, offering to bring back uh, three hundred K through five exceptional education and English language learner students, those with the highest needs. Um, and adding uh, instructional personnel to our facilitated learning centers uh, which currently have about three hundred students, uh, potentially trying to maximize those up to five hundred. And therefore, by doing that, we would, in essence, be providing in-person instruction for about eight hundred students, or at least offering it. I do want to be really clear uh, about the key principles that we were trying to adhere very uh, strongly to in coming up with this proposal. Uh, and why we would feel strongly about not going further than this proposal. Uh, so first, we we did try to prioritize the students with the greatest learning challenges, and we know by and large, uh, those are our young people uh, with IEPs and those who are English learners. And so that is why they've been the focus of this proposal. Second, uh, I believe very strongly that we should do everything we can to protect the current teacher-student relationships. For seven months, our teachers and students have been developing relationships over the computer screen. I think the very worst thing we could do right now would be to break up those relationships and assign students to new teachers. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because a larger in-person return would require us to break up most classes. And I want to be clear about why this is, and I want to make sure the public hears this as well. If you're a third grade teacher, and you're teaching twenty-five students, and we say all third grade can come back if you want to. And your teacher decides she doesn't want to come back. And another teacher in the building decides she does want to come back. Well, what the kids who do want to come back, they're gonna go with the teacher who wants to come back. And the kids who don't want to come back, then all get sent to the teacher who doesn't want to come back. And so what that means is because we'd have very small class sizes for the ones who do come back, we would have very large class sizes for the ones who don't come back. And uh, not only would they be large, but you wouldn't have the same teacher. And I I just think frankly, any benefit that would come from in-person instruction would be negated by the loss of that bond that has been created over the last seven months. And so this proposal would utilize instructional staff that don't have classes of their own right now. They have a license, um, but they're in some support capacity. And so we would uh, redirect them again if they chose to become available for in-person towards these three hundred students or the five hundred uh, in the facilitated learning centers. Um, I talked about uh, avoiding these new inequities of larger class sizes for the families who choose to remain virtual. I also want to note, um, again, based on our our survey from December, um, families of color were far more likely uh, to want to remain virtual than white families. We see that uh, across the country. And and what that means is this families who would be most negatively impacted by a larger return would likely be our families of color. There be the ones who would lose their teacher and would end up with larger class sizes. And then last, uh, I think it is very important that we uphold our promise to our teachers. We said at the start of this year that we would not force any teacher to work in person or any staff member if they were uncomfortable to do so. And I think it is absolutely critical that we maintain that promise for this school year. Uh, that was our solemn word, and I I think we we owe it to our teachers to uphold that. Um, so uh, that is in essence, uh, what guided us, the the proposal, um, I've outlined. We have some additional details here. Um, in terms of process and whatnot, we would um, lay all that out based upon the board's uh, decision tonight. Um, I do want to strongly urge the board to take action tonight. Um, as it is, we are only proposing to bring back this limited number of students uh, after spring break. We think that's the earliest that it would be feasible. That means that's the last eight weeks of the school year. Um, so if we uh, delay much further, um, this largely becomes a a moot exercise as we would be into the last month of the school year. Um, so with that, I I offer you this proposal and respectfully ask uh, that you uh, approve it tonight. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Young?
Uh, Madam Chair, so far yours yours truly is uh, is the only person on the list, though I anticipate there will be more, but if if I may, then uh, assume the floor. Uh, I would like but thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I first want to convey my gratitude to the superintendent uh, for introducing this proposal, for uh, listening to uh, for for listening to our all of our stakeholders, as I know he always does, for soliciting of all of uh, all my colleagues on this board, uh, their counsel and wisdom relevant to what to do next uh, this spring. And uh, I also uh, would like to share, I concur with his assessment, that I think April the twelfth makes a lot of sense, i.e. immediately after spring break, and that it's most appropriate to prioritize those uh, students that are exceptional education uh, students or students with learning disabilities, along with students. You know, along with students that are English language learners, particularly students uh, that uh, that that speak um, speak little to to know English. But uh, but for what it's worth, Madam Chair, I think we, I I do believe we can, we, I do believe we can go a little further. Uh, it's uh, it it it's my contention that we should include in the group of students that have an opportunity to uh, resume in person this this semester for the balance of the academic year, to other groups, to other groups that have been particularly disadvantaged because of virtual, despite Herculean efforts of our teachers and all all of our staff. But uh, I'm referring specifically to our youngest learners, our pre-K and our K to two, K to two learners. Uh, we know uh, we we know by looking at all kind, uh, all kinds of data, including, for example, our attendance data, that that uh, this this group of students are the the least likely to plug in, to log in, to be engaged. Uh, and uh, and and then the second group uh, of students, we actually addressed this uh, earlier this evening, specifically seniors uh, and undercredited seniors. Uh, like uh, everybody around this virtual table this evening, I I couldn't I couldn't be prouder of the work that it that has been done, is being done, relevant to to all of our, all of our seniors, uh, and including our undercredited seniors. But I am mindful that there is a group, I I don't think it's a large group, but I do think that there is a, there's a group, a subset of seniors that uh, that likely would um, that could benefit from some limited in-person if afforded the opportunity. So Madam Chair, with that said, apologize for that that long soliloquy, but if uh, if I may, I'd like to move uh, uh, I would like to move the following uh, with the support of two two colleagues, uh, the following uh, proposal, specifically, uh, effective April the twelfth, teachers may on their own volition opt in to teach in person contingent on an adequate number of students requesting in-person learning. Students eligible to opt in for in-person learning shall include the following recommendations. A, students already enrolled at facilitated learning centers with the goal to in recent increase enrollment to five hundred students. Plus, B, an additional three hundred exceptional education students and English learners in grades three to five with the most significant needs. Plus, any pre-K and K-two students with an emphasis on students identified as lagging in literacy according to PALS data. Plus, any senior who has not received as of March one twenty one, twenty twenty-one, all verified credits for graduation, i.e. students who received a locally awarded verified credit due due to COVID nineteen in the spring twenty and summer assessments were waived, however, they're still behind. Also, any senior who is behind on edgenuity assignments. Five, teachers may choose a temporary faculty assignment for the balance of the twenty twenty-one academic year at one of ten K-twelve school campuses. Six, facilities to be used be will be limited to Huguenot High School, Martin Luther King Middle School, River City Middle School, Blackwell Elementary School, Card- Card- Cardinal, excuse me, Elementary School, Henry Marsh Elementary School, Miles Jones Elementary School, Linwood Holton Elementary School, Oak Grove Belneed Elementary School, and Overby Shepherd Elementary School. Seven, each of the preceding facilities were identified, I'm sorry, each of the preceding facilities were selected because they are new and or relatively new to include the renovated Overby Shepherd. Each of the five schools can more easily accommodate improvements, not limited to HVAC upgrades. Eight, the facilities were additionally selected to provide geographic diversity, including six south of the river and fourth, four north of the James. Nine, it should be noted that five of the facilities constitute facilitated learning centers, and we continue to operate in that capacity, but with the addition of RPS in-person instruction. Almost done. Number ten, of the five facilities not currently used for facilitated learning centers, four would be used for pre-K and K-two in-person instruction. River City Middle School would be used for any undercredited seniors. And last but not least, into the superintendent's uh, most important point a moment ago. Eleven, no RPS teachers or staff would be required to work in person. Madam Chair, that that is my uh, motion.
Alright, so on the, I'm sorry.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I I was just gonna speak to, I believe, there are some comment.
Okay, what I was getting ready to say, so we have on the
Ms. White.
Alright, um, so we have on the floor your motion. And we also have on the floor, um,
And
we have on the floor your motion, Mr. Young, which is the s- what the superintendent presented, but you added pre-K, K and two, and high school seniors in need of in-person instruction.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have the superintendent.
I'm sorry, and Madam Chair, I was just going to uh, uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Collins, Board Clerk, has the actual, the document, uh, though though I mailed it to everyone, I wanted to provide to Ms. Collins for the purpose of the motion, it was, it's rather long.
Yes, and I did, I do have a copy as well. Thank you. Um, thank you for mailing it. Um, so let's get straight. So number one, we have the superintendent's plan of um, proposal for reopening. And number two, we have a motion to receive that plan, but as you stated, to add more to it. So now if we can move, um, I didn't hear a second for your motion, is, or do we need to move forward with other discussion, Mr. Cameras? I see his hand up.
Madam Burke, if I may, I would just ask that you not characterize Mr. Young's motion as the administration's proposal um, plus some more. I would prefer that you characterize him as two separate proposals. Um, so you have Mr. Young's motion as one, um, and the administration's proposal as a separate matter. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you for that. And um, so right here, we just have one plan, one motion on the floor. So are we ready for a second, or are we ready to?
Ye- yes, ma'am. We have a few persons that have submitted a request to speak. I'm unsure if any of, any of those persons intend to second. Uh, so perhaps that would be most germane to request that at this time.
Usually folk key in to the chat that they're gonna make the motion. And or they're going to second. They will have our discussion. So if there's someone that wants to second, alright, Dr. Harris Mohammed, would you please state?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Madam President, I did come right under Jonathan, and I did put motion under there.
Okay, okay, okay. Didn't see that. MOT. Okay, alright.
MOT I.
Yeah, MOT I, okay, alright.
And I would like to make a motion.
Okay, so you're gonna make another motion, or you're second, you're second, Mr. Young's motion?
I want to make, I want to make another motion.
Okey dokey, so we do, so you second Jonathan's motion?
No, I didn't.
No. Okay, I got it. Alright, so now we have a I was trying to finish up with Mr. Young's first, but I guess I can go ahead. I don't have a second. I can't do that, right, Ms. Lilly? Dr. Harris Mohammed was second, seconded that motion. Then we'll move on.
Yeah.
One moment, please, one moment, please, please, one moment. We're not going anywhere, folk. Just trying to make sure we do this in the right manner. Ms. Lilly, from what I understand, Mr. Young's motion was moved and was properly seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed. Mrs. White also has a motion. So I can finish up his motion, then come to her motion, or she's going to amend amend the motion?
At thi- at this point in time, Mr. Young made a motion. Um, this, excuse me, Dr. Harris Mohammed, I know she put it in the chat, but she needs to verbalize whether or not there was a second. And then we need to dispose of his motion one way or the other. I don't know if Ms. White intends to amend that particular motion or make a separate motion altogether, but we need to um, to deal with Mr. Young's motion on the floor, and
Thank you.
Dr. Harris Mohammed needs to verbalize whether or not there is a second to that motion.
Thank you. And then we'll move on with discussion after this, and then Mrs. Um, White can make her motion.
If there is a need to make the motion after this one is disposed of, then yes, it just depends on the vote for this.
Okay, and I did hear, I thought Dr. Harris Mohammed, would you repeat it again, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I second the motion that was articulated by our vice chair, Jonathan Young. Uh, Madam Attorney, do I need to repeat?
No.
Everything, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that
Now we're ready for discussion. If anyone would like to speak to Mr. Young's motion, seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed, this is your time to speak regarding Mr. Young's motion. Mr. Young, who's listed to speak, please?
Ms. Dore.
That's all?
They're, they're, they're coming, they're coming, Ms. Page, uh, immediately subsequent, Ms. Dore.
Alright, Ms. Dore, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I am prepared to support uh, this motion. Um, I am deeply respect um, Mr. Cameras' words um, leading into this. Um, however, I think that when we made the motion to support virtual, we did that, um, keeping in mind the the physical health of our students. And as one representative, I believe, during public comment last um, board meeting from the pediatric community discussed, I do think that now we are in a place where the so- social and emotional health has um, brought to bear some, some pretty important considerations. Given the fact that we are only uh, two of one hundred and thirty-two districts across the, so there's only two, just Given the fact that we are only, uh, two of one hundred and thirty-two districts across the, so there's only two, just Richmond and. Sussex, I believe, that, um, are completely virtual at this point in time. Um, some of the peer districts that we look to, Norfolk is pre-K through five, returning hybrid. Newport News is returning hybrid, all students. I do think that, and the abundance of recommendations from. C D C, pediatric community, et cetera, that, uh, schools are not evidence to be super spreaders, especially for. Um, younger students. I do think that, um. We should be exploring additional in-person options, and so I am prepared to support this tonight. And I would say that should it go forward, um, I think we need to not make this a self-fulfilling prophecy that. This only benefits a certain subset of students. I think we need to push, uh, to, to make this information widely available to all of our communities. Um, and ensure that every student can take advantage of in-person should they want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dore. Ms. Page?
Yes, Madam Chair, um. I'm not in support of this motion and my reason being that. You want us to make an informed decision, but we received this information at five oh three P M. today and. I don't feel like. That is a part of our oversight and that we're, and that we, um. That we're able to perform our due diligence so that we can make an informed decision. So I'm not going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. I believe Ms. Jones and then Ms. Rizzi, is that correct, Mr. Young?
Uh, it half right. Uh, Ms. Ms. Jones and then Doc- Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Ms. Rizzi's not listed?
And then we have other.
Okay, alright, Ms. Jones?
Then Ms. Gibson. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo, um, the sentiments of Ms. Page. Um, I think that we can't really pick and choose on when we receive and how we receive information as it relates to us making a vote. And I've constantly seen us, um, not be in support of things that we've received at the last minute and not have enough time to really oversee it. I personally, myself, didn't have a chance to go all the way through it because, as Ms. Page said, we could receive that at five oh three. Um, I appreciate the creativity and, you know, all of the energy put, being put forth to working towards reopening. But I'd like to see that be something that we can all work together collectively and not just drop, you know, in the, in the, in this. State of a moment and expect, um, a decision. So I personally as well won't be able to support that. I don't have enough information on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then Ms. Rizzi.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair. Ms. Page and Ms. Jones, thank you all for your comments. Um, I have. For a couple of weeks and, um, I have a couple of comments for, for you, Mr. Cameras also, but. I had made some recommendations with, um, my colleagues about what I thought and how we can move forward, particularly. Um, one of my, one of my passions, strong passions is, um. Ensuring that our seniors are where they need to be. And so my information in terms of the senior portion is not really new. It's not new at all because I had shared that previously, but I do understand, um, your sentiment and where you're coming from. I really do. Um, Mr. Cameras, you know. A- as you're well aware, as everyone is well aware, I work in a building. And have worked in buildings and central office for a very long time. That might be neither here nor there, but I'm going there for a reason because in my experience. As a building administrator, kids are resilient and I hear your heart. I sincerely hear your heart with the concern about breaking relationships with students. That come, that choose to come back to the building and they may have a different face than the person that they've been with. For seven months, but I wanna, wanna, I would like for us to think about a couple of things. It is not the public nor the students, the staff, or that we're really not ready. And I said, we. Regardless if I was a part of the unit in twenty twenty or not, I'm a part of the unit right now. And so it's really not their fault that we're not ready. For any kind of reopening. But for me, as well as my colleagues, I have no doubt, student achievement drives. Everything is, what policy drives the division and within that, I aim at student achievement. I think we can do this. If I didn't think we could do this, I would not have co-signed. I would not have shared my sentiments with my two other colleagues. I also believe that, and, and that drives me back to my question earlier about soft enrollment. There are divisions in our region, in our area, and in our state that are doing the following. Students who choose face to face. And students who choose to remain hybrid. The teacher of those students, A and B, continue to teach virtually to A and B student. It can, you stated earlier, Mr. Cameras, that. It, things can be done. It may be different. It may be new. It may be a little scary for everybody. But I heard, I've, I've heard over time, how do we know it's not gonna work if we don't test it, if we don't try it? And so I am saying that the senior, the, the recommendations on. The, um. Um, students who have to take the PALS assessment, the seniors who are in our division language. Un- under accredited, but those who are in those cohorts that are a year or more behind. Those are the students that, in my professional opinion of thirty years. Need direct target and different, a different type of robust. Remediation along with students with di- disabilities. And so those, what I'm speaking to right now is not new to us, is not new to the public.
Madam Chair, I, I can't hear Dr. Harris Mohammed, can you?
I can't either. No, she's frozen, I believe. So, um. But, but I see, she's frozen for the moment. Maybe we can put something in the chat to let her know she's frozen. So while we're waiting on Dr. Harris Mohammed to come back, um. Was there someone else? Oh, now she's gone completely. There she is. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
I'm assuming that that was time for me to be quiet because. It just went, it just went woo, so I'm gonna take that as a cue and start right there. I'm so glad.
Thank you so much for your comments. You heard most of it, I'm sure, but then you just froze and then you disappeared.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Glad you're back. Mr. Young, is anyone else listed to speak to this motion on the floor?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson.
Ms. Ms. Rizzi hadn't spoken, had she? Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. Gibson?
Uh, no. Uh, I believe it was in the other order, but I'll defer to the two ladies in, uh, in that regard, but, uh, do believe it was Ms. Gil- Gibson. Ms. Rizzi and then Ms. White, if I'm not mistaken. I apologize, I apologize.
No problem. No problem. Ms. Gibson? Then Ms. Rizzi, then Ms. White.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, yeah, I think that we just spent. A good amount of time talking about getting a dashboard ready, you know. That we've been talking about getting a dashboard ready for a long time, so. Um, so, you, you know, we're not ready. To me, this is, um, you know, it. I, you know, we, we have to get more folks vaccinated. I mean, I, I have, I have the same concerns that I've had, but, um, but to me. Uh, uh, you know, I mean, we, we, we don't, we don't, we, we are just still talking about the, what the dashboard's gonna have in it, you know? Um, so, and I, uh, share the concerns too, um, just about, you know, I mean, we would literally be putting. Our, our, um, the district in, on a roller coaster where, um, you know, bringing this without, um, more advanced notice, so. Um, so I, I, uh, I'm not in support of, um, of this plan. But, you know, that said, I, I, I think that, let's see, you know, I, I still, I wanna hear what we can do. And what that would look like and, um, and so I, I encourage the administration to, to provide the dashboard and. Um, and, and to provide those updates so that we can continue to engage in the discussion. I. I agree that maintaining those relationships is critical. Um, this is also one of the concerns that I have with the year-long plan and those intercessions. Where we would be putting those students, um, you know, in classrooms with, with brand-new people and brand-new staff. Um, so I, I do think that the, uh, those continued relationships are important. Um, but I think that, um, at this stage, we, 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 we need to have a plan in place. Where we, we have, we know how we're gonna go forward in the fall and, um, and, and make sure that we can actually deliver on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and while I really appreciate what y'all are trying to do here, um. Um, this is not something I'm really interested in trying at this point. You know, you're talking to someone who just lost a relative, close relative to COVID. A relative from a very prominent family, in fact. Um, you know, some of our population were a little different from our surrounding areas, right? And for me, my grandma was my son's caretaker. My grandma took my son when she was in her seventies. And she helped me raise him until she died at ninety-seven. So, um, I would hate to have our children carry back any kind of, you know, and, and I'm not saying that that. Could ever be prevented, but like right now, I just think we need to be careful. We need to carefully plan. And we need to make sure I didn't hear any kind of plan for transportation. I didn't hear anything about safety protocols and how those could be rushed to accommodate this. Increased number of people that you wanna bring in. So at this point, I can't, um, support this last-minute proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. White? Were you next on the agenda?
Uh, yes. Is this for my motion or is this for me to speak?
Not yet. This is to speak. Did you wanna speak regarding this motion?
Ye- yes, I'll speak. Uh, based on, um, how I feel about this, I cannot support it. Uh, this is not a, uh, realistic, or, uh, should I say. Uh, realistic and detailed planned. I believe in, uh, good planning. Um, I see what, I see where you're going, um, Mr. Cameras, three hundred. For the I E P and the English learners. I agree with that. The five hundred learning centers and then as we. Heard your plan and then another plan was brought into a plan. And so when I'm seeing two different plans coming from two different versions. Um, and I know my colleague and someone else, they actually put that together and as a board, we do it as a board, so we don't know what you all did. I heard that, uh, Mr. Um, Young said him and someone else, but as a board, we should be included as a board when you start making plans. So this is plan is not concrete for me enough when you have two different plans going along. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White, for your comments. Alright, are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Madam Chair, I, uh, do.
I'm sorry, someone else? Mr. Cameras?
Well, I'm sorry, I believe the superintendent wanted to weigh in.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cameras?
Um, just very briefly, I just wanted to note, I, I, I just wanted to recognize, um, that I certainly understand where. Mr. Young, Ms. Dore, and, and Dr. Harris Mohammed are coming from. Uh, this is an extremely difficult. Year that has been filled with successive extremely difficult decisions. Um, I just wanna recognize, uh, and honor that I know your motion comes from a place of. Um, caring for our young people and their families. Um, unfortunately, I think we're faced with a whole bunch of bad options this year. Um, and, uh, the reason I, I, I'm not supportive of this is just because unbalanced, I think. Um, th- this would not have the intended effect at this late stage of the year. Um, but I do want you three to know that I, that I certainly understand where this is coming from. Uh, and to, to families out there as well. I want them to know that as well. Um, but as, as many board members have said, I'd. Uh, like to proceed with the, the, um, proposal we put forward and then turn our attention squarely to next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras. So colleagues, this is a reminder that we are voting on Mr. Young. Dr. Harris Mohammed and Ms. Dore's, um, proposed reopening plan at this time. It was motioned by Mr. Young and seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed. Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Dore?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
No.
Mrs. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
Hi.
Ms. Rizzi?
No.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
No.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
No.
Ms. Nicole Jones?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, Mrs. White, we're ready for your motion.
Um, thank you, Madam President. I move to lay the reopening of the plan until we get a concrete plan. That is realistic and detailed for R P S opening of schools.
So this is not in regards to Mr. Cameras'?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, okay, alright. So you, would you repeat your motion, please?
I move to lay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move to lay the reopening of the plan until we get a concrete plan that is realistic and detailed.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Mrs. Um, White and seconded by Mrs. Rizzi. To wait until we receive a detailed plan. Uh, I, is there any discussion?
Madam, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. White, would you be open, I know we just got a second, but I was, um, I didn't wanna interrupt the chair. By asking you, would you be open to a amendment to your motion to include? Uh, a couple of things. I, I heard your motion say to, to, in summary, detailed information. But I think it would be important to identify that what the detailed information is in the motion. I, I'm just, I, I'm just. Throwing out a suggestion.
Mohammed, uh, yes, but I, I don't wanna amend my motion, but when I said detailed, there is not enough detail in his. Uh, his plan for me as a schoolboy person or a mother, that I don't see any safety pro- protocols. As well as the three hundred I was talking about and the five hundred that was a learning center. And then I believe that's why you came up with your mo- I mean, your motion, because you wanted to add those because you missed those. Those are things that are already should be included in a plan when you are, uh, and when you are giving them to someone. So I need a whole entire plan that is realistic, that you can give to each parent, family member in garden, that, I mean, teachers. That they can see that when you look at this plan, we can go down the list and it's just don't exclude or include. Certain students. We need to have a breakdown of a real plan. This is not a real plan for me.
Okay, so, Madam Chair.
Okay, one moment, please. One moment, one moment. Alright, I just need to make sure that we've carried out the motion and now we have in discussion, but we have other people listed, so continue on, Dr. Harris Mohammed, then, Mr.
I got one question also, uh, for, um, if you're doing a, uh, lay down on the question at the table, there is no debate.
Okay, but we have other persons that have questions regarding your. Uh, motion.
I mean, I mean, I mean, they may have questions, but there's still, there's no debate with fully on the table.
Did I say the word debate? Did I say the word?
But she was, she was asking me questions back and forth.
Okay.
Gotta make sure that you know that there is not a debate here.
Um, thank you, Ms. White. Thank you. Dr. Harris Mohammed, did you have something else to state regarding? Mrs. White's motion?
I did, but now I'm confused because does someone, I, I'm confused and colleagues, please, just bear with me. Does someone?
Does someone say delay or close the question? Did I miss that? When I? One moment, one moment, one moment, one moment. We all would get a chance to speak. Ms. Lilly, would you address the process right here now?
Yeah.
I understand the debate part.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm confused as well. And so I just want to make sure of what the intent of the motion was. There was no motion on the floor to lay on the table. That motion was disposed of. So I understood, Ms. White, are you saying that you would like to delay the opening plan until there is more detail? Is that, is that what you're saying? Because I, you know, that's whoever seconded, Dr. Harris Mohammed, is that what you understood her to say?
Yes, and tha- tha- that's why I was asking.
Okay, yeah, because this wa- you know, there's not a motion that was on the floor to be laid on the table. So if you're trying to lay a mo- lay a motion on the table, that's not, I, I don't know that there was one, I mean, that the previous motion was already disposed of. So if your intent is to delay the reopening plan until you get more detail, then that's what I thought your motion was.
No, my motion was I moved to lay on the table, which means that I wanted to lay it aside temporarily until we do get a concrete plan.
She said lay on the table.
Lay, that's what I, that was my motion.
Okay.
Okay. Arbor rules of order now.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you say lay.
Opening, I believe.
I thought she said delay. No, I said lay, L-A-Y.
Right.
Okay, okay.
I, I don't think that, that, Dr. Harris Mohammed, was that clear to you? It wasn't clear to me, and so I apologize for that.
I apologize, Ms. White.
Ms. White, it, it wasn't, and I apologize.
No problem, no problem, no problem. We can just move on. No problem.
That's why, that's why I asked if she could just put it in the chat. That's why I had asked if she could put it in the chat.
That's okay. Do everybody have it now? Everyone have it?
Alright. So the motion on the table is that Ms. White asked that we lay it on the table, put it to the side. Doctor, excuse me, Ms. Rizzi, second. Now, um, it's now time for discussion per se. I want us to be mindful of one item. And Mr. Cameras, I'm gonna ask this of you, because I know the State Department also has made certain requests of us, which our meeting is this week with the VDOE regarding, um, our intentions to open, to reopen, what is going to be on the table. This, this also comes up beyond what the governor stated, which we know we will not make the March fifteenth deadline. Would you speak to that, please? Because if we do lay it per se to the side, how much time do we have before we need to submit something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just first, a, a parliamentary note. I think there would need to have been a motion for the motion to be laid aside. And I don't think we have a motion right now. So, um, I would defer to Ms. Lilly on that, but tha- that is my understanding. Um, second, as for the timeline, i- if, if the board doesn't take action tonight, um, and, and we don't take action until our next meeting, which is March fifteenth, realistically, we would not be bringing kids back until the end of April or early May, at which point it becomes rather moot. So I would strongly advise against the board, uh, delaying action on this. Um, I think tonight is our night. Either we're going to, uh, proceed or we're not. And, uh, that, that would be my recommendation.
And from what I understood, no, this is not the, the plan that our parents and community would end up getting in this manner. This is a report per se as a proposal, as you well know, as you all well know. But, um, speaking with the State Department as well, um, of which I have been in contact, this would give the superintendent an opportunity, the administration, to put in place, as Ms. White stated. So right now, Ms. Lilly, you stated that we need to continue with this, this, um, motion, or which we can, and then move on to a motion to accept or not accept the superintendent's, um, proposal to get started.
As I was trying to explain before, the superintendent is correct. There was no motion to lay on the table. The previous motion had already been disposed of. And so, well, apart from not understanding, because I don't know that table was used, but I could have missed that. Um, but not understanding, um, Ms. White's original motion, it would not be in order because there is no motion to lay on the table. Now, if she wants to make a motion to delay, um, the reopening plan until there is, det- more detail, that's an appropriate motion. I know i- it's not semantics, because that's parliamentary procedure. But it's, i- it's just, you know, would not be appropriate to vote on laying something on the table, because there's nothing to lay on the table.
Can I say something?
Ms. Ms. White, you just finished saying about Robert's Rules of Order.
I know, but I need to, uh, respond to that one.
Yes, go right ahead.
Miss Lilly, at the moment, when I wanted to make that motion, right after Jonathan, Mr. Young, Ms., uh, Madam President, start asking questions, gave everybody the opportunity. I was gonna make that motion. That's the motion that I was gonna make right after him, to lay that one on the table. So that's what happened.
I understand. I, I hear you now with that. However, that would be moot at this point, because that motion was disposed of and failed.
Well, then can I, I change my motion then?
Madam?
So.
That, I mean.
Madam President.
The motion to lay on the table would not be in order. Um, and so.
Delay.
If she wishes to make another motion, that's up to her.
Alright, Ms. White, you have another motion you'd like to make?
Um, yes, uh, Madam President, I've moved to postpone, um, postpone. So I gotta change it. Postpone to the, to re- to the reopening of the plan until we get a concrete plan. And then it must be realistic and detailed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. White and seconded by Ms. Rizzi to postpone the reopening plan as submitted. Mr., um, Young, do we have anyone to speak?
Yes, ma'am, though I'm not sure if by now, any base comments are germane to the motion. But still, I will recite who is in order that they identified in chat. Uh, Ms. Gibson, then Ms. White, and then, then Ms. Rizzi.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I have to say, I, I, I feel, uh, I'm frustrated for my colleague, Ms. White. Um, let's be frank, we don't follow Robert's Rules of Orders very precisely. If we did, um, after the administration made their presentation, there would immediately be a motion on the table. Um, I think that would help save lots of time. And, um, and I do think that Ms. White, eh, eh, you know, saying she had a motion, it was obviously timely, should have had the opportunity to share her motion at that time. Um, I understood the, the, um, intent of the motion, and I would have been, uh, comfortable proceeding. I, uh, I, I, I share the concerns about the, you know, needing a bit more detail. I've been asking for some time, um, for more data in terms of any COVID cases at any of these, uh, school facilities. I've asked, um, I think it would be important to understand if there is any budget implications on, on having these students back in school. Um, you know, uh, what the, uh, the, this, you know, transportation, I mean, there, there are still some questions to be had. Um, you know, I'm not necessarily wanting to, um, you know, impede moving forward on this. I'm, I'm somewhat torn. I, I do, uh, I would like to see more information. Um, you know, this is a continual, uh, refrain that I have. And, uh, you know, I, I would like to, to find out how we can get there, because this is an ongoing thing. And, look, um, you know, myself and I believe some of my colleagues that are asking for information, you know, we're not, um, you know, we don't want to continue to do this. So how can we, um, how can we move forward and be in a better place? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. And, uh, Ms. White? Were you next, Ms. White?
I don't think I, um, I thought maybe my motion.
That must have been left. That was left, okay. Ms. Rizzi, were you next?
Yes, um, yeah, I don't want to impede progress on this. Um, I just, you know, there are some holes. I don't see anything about transportation. I don't know how, um, from what I hear, some of those facilitated learning centers are not real large. So I don't know how, you know, these two hundred extra children are going to be added and still, you know, adhere to social distancing and safety protocols. So there are some, some holes I see here that maybe could be easily filled. Um, you know, I mean, I don't want to block it, but at the same time, I want, uh, you know, there are some things here that I have questions about. So, um, I, I think that's all I want to express.
Anyone else, Mr. Young?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Page?
Ms. Page? Floor is yours. Yes, thank you, Mr. Young, Madam Chair. Um, I have a motion. Please proceed. I'm trying to, and then go through.
Madam Chair, may I?
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I believe there's a motion on the floor.
That's what I was gonna say. May I ask a question to Ms. Page?
Sure.
Ms. Page? I can't hear, hear you.
Yeah. Page, you're muted.
Um, does your motion have, is, is that with respect to Ms. White's and Ms. Rizzi's motion that's on the floor already?
No, I, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So you're rescinding at this point. Thank you. So can we, is there any more discussion regarding the motion that Ms. White made, seconded by Ms. Rizzi? And that is to, um, postpone until more concrete information is in place?
Madam Chair, no, no additional comments.
Alright, thank you very much. So we're ready to vote. The motion again, Ms. White, would you mind repeating your motion? Or did I say it correctly? In terms of postponing this plan, receiving this plan at this time, until more concrete information is given. And Ms. Rizzi did second that. Got that? Okay, let's vote.
Mrs. Dorr?
We're ready.
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Rizzi? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
No.
Ms. Dawn Page?
No.
And Ms. Nicole Jones?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you all very much. So, Mr., um, Cameras, it has been approved to move forward with the next step.
I think Ms. Page now has a motion. I think all that we just did is, 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 um.
Thank you. It must be time. I'm like Ms. Mohammed, Dr. Ham- Mohammed. It's time to, it's after ten o'clock apparently, isn't it? Okay, alright. So yes, I do have a motion. Alright, thank you. I'm sorry, my mistake. Alright, Ms. Page, now you can make your motion. Okay. To receive for action the spring twenty twenty-one reopening proposal. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, I was just, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I was just gonna cite that Li- uh, Ms. Dorr had moved a second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Page, and we just heard Ms. Dorr second that motion. Is there any discussion at this time? Mr. Young, any discussion?
Madam, Madam Chair, yes, uh, yes, ma'am, uh, uh, we have a few folks here. I'm sorry. Uh, Ms. White, Dr. Harris Mohammed, and then Ms. Page.
Alright, Ms. White?
Yes, my question is, uh, we, the motion was just made to, uh, for the action of the spring twenty twenty-one reopen proposal. My, uh, question is, when will we receive the answers that we have just asked about, uh, ten minutes ago, dealing with the, um, actual, um, safety protocols, specific safety protocols, dealing with the transportation, um, all of those things that we have asked Mr. Cameras. When will we receive those, Mr. Cameras?
I'm happy to do an update at our next board meeting.
Our next board meeting?
Yes, Ms. White.
When is the, uh, plan due? I thought it was due immediately, because you wanted us to vote on it tonight. So when was, when is the plan actually, uh, due to the, uh, Department of Education?
The, the item that needs to be submitted to the Department of Education is not a particularly detailed, uh, item. It's just a high-level overview. So what I have provided you tonight is sufficient for those purposes. Um, if this motion were to pass, uh, we would, of course, uh, get to work on all of the questions that, that you have raised and have a follow-up, uh, more detailed presentation for you on March fifteenth.
So March the fifteenth, we'll have more detail with everything that we, uh, have asked tonight, with even the metrics and everything. We shouldn't have to question anything. It should be there March the fifteenth.
I'm, I'm certain that you'll have some questions, but, but I will do my best to, uh, prepare a, a comprehensive update for you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. Ms. Dr. Harris Mohammed? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I am, I, I can't support this proposal the way that it's currently written, Mr. Cameras, and I know that, um, and, and I am a bit conflicted, because I know as well as you, the urgency of getting this proposal and drafting it and doing all of that. But to not consider our seniors, who we know, we have a cohort of seniors who are in jeopardy of not graduating, just sent a message to me that not, the message is not that they are not important. Let me be clear, but it has sent a message to me that we're not prioritizing the seniors who need that additional support so they can graduate in June or even August, or the summer graduation. So I'm very concerned about that. But I do want the public to be aware and to know from my heart that I'm appreciative, because I support, there are sections in the proposal that I'm a strong component of. But not to include those students and the children who are, uh, based on the PALS data, are struggling just as much. It really concerns me, and I want the public to know that. It is critically important that the public knows that, because I, I just don't understand, you know, also, let me ask this also. Would that be an opportunity after April the twelfth to look at bringing some of those seniors into the building to get that support?
Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
Um, I, I, I certainly understand your concern, Dr. Harris Mohammed. Um, uh, we are, uh, similarly focused on our seniors. And I think the data we showed earlier tonight illustrates, um, actually, our seniors are in a better position amidst this pandemic than they have been for actually several years, which doesn't mean that they don't need additional support. Surely, they do. But I do think we are providing that support through, uh, many different avenues. Uh, in addition, on the science, we know that the youngest children, um, are the least at risk. Um, I think that's very clear. Uh, but we also know, as you get into the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen-year-old cohort, the risk does increase, uh, rather significantly. So I think from a, from a public health perspective, um, seniors would be the last students we would want to bring back into buildings. Um, but again, we remain one hundred percent committed to providing every single bit of support we can provide and are doing so. Um, and, and I think those, the numbers we shared earlier tonight do demonstrate that.
Thank you, Mr. Um, Cameras and Dr. Harris Mohammed. And I do hope that some, I don't, I want us to stay on topic with this, um, what's in place right now regarding, but I would like at some point if Mrs., if Dr. F could share that robust, um, guide that is in place to support our seniors. So at some point, um, but I, I don't want to, yeah, I see it put a thumbs up. So the board members will all know about the different programs that are in place. All right, we have Ms. Page is next to speak regarding the motion that Ms. Page made.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to thank my colleague, um, bringing up the concern about the seniors. So, yes, I too would like to see a robust plan because if there is evidence that our seniors are in jeopardy of not receiving the proper credits that they need to graduate, yes, and we need to address it. But is there evidence? And also, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, the decisions that we make must be reflective of our community. And yes, going forward, the information that we receive at our next meeting or prior to that, want it to be intentional and very detailed because we all know that our Black and Brown families feel, fear the history of our past. So we must be intentional and very clear with our plans of reopening going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Mr. Young, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rizzi, Ms. White, Ms. Gibson, and then yours truly.
Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, um, I will say, in, you know, the interest of progress, I'm leaning towards supporting this, but I will tell you that I'm growing extremely wary of voting on, um, proposals for which I don't have all the information, for which we don't have all the information, for which we are lacking details. Um, I am really growing very, very tired of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. White?
Um, I just have to, uh, ask, um, Mr. Cameras, um, since we're already late by the governors, um, and we're gonna start in April, and this is supposed to last to June for two months, where's the other plan leading from June? I'd like to know that also. And I'm with Ms. Rizzi on this. We've been making some, um, some, these aren't plans. These are things that's just coming up while we're doing board meetings to distract, to make a, 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 a conscious decision. It is time for us to get concrete plans that are realistic for our students. And I would not be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Young?
Madam, Madam Chair, I believe Ms. Gibson immediately proceeds.
I'm sorry. Ms. Gibson?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I share the sentiment of, of my colleagues, Ms. Rizzi and Ms. White. Um, you know, I, I will vote, um, in, in support of this plan this evening with you know, considerable hesitation. And, and let's be frank, we are spending a, a lot of time talking about a plan with very little information for very few students. Um, you know, we, we should be further along. Um, and, uh, I'm eager to, to get more detail from the administration, um, you know, on plans as they become more concrete. And, um, and I'm, uh, I'm, I'm very eager to see, you know, details for, um, you know, for fall reopening, understanding what are the various contingencies and such, so that we are not repeating this conversation, um, again in a couple of months' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Now, Mr. Young?
Uh, Madam, Madam Chair, uh, what perhaps I was going to share is now moot. Subsequent, my feeble attempt to count noses on this, this vote, um, I was going to share that I was prepared before this meeting to vote, uh, in opposition to this, uh, proposal, uh, only be, only for all the reasons that I identified in introducing along with my two colleagues, the other proposal, but, uh, I feared for a moment that, uh, we would be at risk of, uh, we would be at risk of not at least providing, uh, some students, eight hundred students, an opportunity for in-person. Uh, now that, if, if my math is correct, it looks as though, uh, passage is assured. I'll, I'll be voting no for the reason that I identified at the top of my remarks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is anyone else listed?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, let's, um, come back to Ms. Page made the motion. Ms. Page, do you mind repeating that, please? You're muted.
My apologies.
No problem at all.
I moved to receive for action the Spring twenty twenty-one reopening proposal.
I believe it was seconded by Mrs. Dora. All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
No.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
No.
Mrs. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Upstaying.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dawn Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Nicole Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we will submit that plan and also, that was the motion, I'll leave it at that. Six point zero two, receive for action budget transfers. That is, Ms. Deasco?
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, board members. Um, I'm bringing you tonight, um, a simple board transfer of funds within our exceptional education budget, um, due to a variety of personnel matters, some staff out on maternity leave and other medical leaves. We do need to hire some temporary staff, um, for a very short period of time, uh, in order to maintain required levels of special education services for students. So this is moving money from a currently underutilized line, um, into a professional services line that will allow for this temporary coverage.
All right, um, may I get a motion to accept? Please, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the recommendation to move the budget, to approve, excuse me, to, um, approve the budget change requested.
Is there a second? Ms. White? You're muted, Ms. White. Second. Thank you. Moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mrs. White to accept this budget transfer. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheryl Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Deasco. Six point zero four, a second read and action on update to policy three dash three point, oh, excuse me, I'm skipping one. Six point zero three, receive for action the school board, school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two program of studies. Thank you. Dr. F?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I bring, uh, the, uh, final reads for both middle school and high school program of studies for approval. I'm happy to take any questions.
Madam Chair, Dr. Share, uh, Shonda Harris Mohammed has requested the floor.
All right, Dr. Harris Mohammed, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the changes made to the high school program of studies and the middle school program of studies for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Rizzi? Was it Ms. Rizzi?
No, I see Ms. Page, Ms. Page.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, immediately subsequent to second, uh, Ms. Gibson has requested opportunity to address the group.
Okay, Ms. Page, second the motion. And the motion was made by Dr. Harris Mohammed. So now we're ready for discussion. Mrs., um, Gibson, you said? Ms. Gibson? Floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to ask for clarity. What, what, with the meeting that we discussed, the, um, we took the first read on this and, um, and were, were redlined shared at that time because it's very difficult. Um, and I don't know if maybe the last version had redlines and this one doesn't, but it's very difficult to see what are the changes in the document um, from the original version.
Mine has, um, colored. Blue and red. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the student activity. Forgive me.
Um, Madam Chair, if I may.
Dr. F, would you please answer that? I'm looking at the wrong one.
No, uh, we did not redline because we build it, um, from, uh, from the courses offered each year. So, uh, I did highlight in the first read presentation, the new courses that were added and, um, uh, the new, and the local courses that we were proposing to continue.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. F and Ms. Gibson. Mr. Young, anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Excuse me?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we're ready to vote. It was moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed, as seconded by Mrs. Page to accept the, um, program of studies. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yeah.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. F. All right, now, six point zero four, the second read and action on three dash three point eight student activity funds.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mrs. Burke, and thank you to Ms. Burke and Dr. Harris Mohammed for both offering feedback and talking about this policy uh, with me, uh, last week. You'll notice there is some updated feedback, um, uh, based on those conversations surrounding the use of a safe. Um, and so if there's not any further questions, um, I appreciate the board's vote, uh, this evening.
May I get a motion, please? Mr. Young? All right, we do have, um, Dr. Harris Mohammed, would you proceed?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the, the, um, excuse me, colleagues, let me start, start over. I move that we accept the policy as it is written and had been advised for the school activity funds.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, so, Ms. Page?
Ms. Page? You're muted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and properly seconded by Ms. Page to accept this student activity fund with changes made as so noted. Is there any discussion? Any questions? If not, we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Door?
Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yeah.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passing.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Deasco, yes. All right, six point zero five personnel actions. Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the tablet brings forth the following personnel actions for your consideration. The nomination of six employees, the change of contract of six employees, the resignation of four employees, the retirement of one employee, the termination of one employee, the name change of three employees, and the death of one employee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Ms. Lee. We're ready. Yes, Mr. Young, do we have a motion to?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed had a question, uh, for Ms. Lee.
Okay, Dr. Harris Mohammed, please, go right ahead. Thank you.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't see a document uploaded under six point zero five when I clicked on it several times today, and I just clicked on it.
Dr. Harris Mohammed, you're muted.
I'm muted. I'm sorry. I don't, I apologize. I don't see under six point zero five and board dots
Mm-hmm.
the personnel actions that Mrs. Lee, I, I, I mean, I see Ms. Lilly going like this, but I am right there and I don't see it.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Young.
Uh, Dr. Harris Mohammed, uh, there, it likely, you're likely operating in the public tab, but you'll need to access the executive tab which is located up at the, it, it's, it's small and, and difficult, difficult to find. It's up at the right cor, up towards the right corner.
If I may, you need to log in with your
Yeah.
I did. I, I did. I, I logged out and logged back in, so let me see if I I, I just didn't see it, but I logged out. But please don't wait on me. Please don't wait on me. Don't do that.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Ms. Gibson did have a question.
Yes, Ms. Gibson?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question, um, and also, I guess, a request regarding the new FTEs on the, uh, uh, on our action list today. I'm wondering, um, which budget these new FTEs are from? And, um, and also the repurposed FTE, if that involved any type of budget transfer. My, my request is that moving forward, we note, um, you know, when there is a new FTE, where that, you know, what, what, where that is, is funded from. Um, and, um, you know, I, I, it would be my preference if we had a document that noted when these new FTEs were approved, you know, where, what the, um, pay grade was, um, again, just for the ability to, um, to, you know, uh, to, to, to confirm that all is, uh, aligned with our, our, our vote.
All right, thank you. Dr. Shonda Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. When I lost the internet earlier, it logs me out of everything, so when I clicked back on it, I was not in the executive side. So, I, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Young, for letting me, for saying that because I wouldn't have known. And I do have a motion, Madam Chair, to accept the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed, is there a second? May I hear a second? Thank you, Ms. Paige, which is, please state it. You're on mute.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mrs. Paige to accept the Personnel Actions as listed. Less, are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
I had a question that wasn't, wasn't answered, I wasn't, so, I mean, I, I guess I'm gonna abstain from this, but I did have a question I thought would be addressed.
Okay, we can go back to that. And you did ask a question about the pay grade, right? Would, Ms. Lee be, Mr. Cameras?
I, I'm not sure, I, I thought there was a comment about going forward, but I'm glad to gather whatever information Ms. Gibson needs. I'm not, I didn't quite catch it.
Yes, my apologies, Ms. Gibson, I did not catch the question either. I thought that there was a request regarding FTE approvals and information about salaries going forward, and I'm happy to provide that information in the future.
So, the question is regarding the positions here, and there is a go-forward ask, but I would like to know which budget these new FTEs are, are from, that are new FTEs on this action item? And if the repurposed FTE that is noted involved any type of budget transfer?
Sorry, I think we'd have to, I'm not sure we have that offhand right now. I don't know, Ms. Lee, if you do, but we can certainly get that and circle back, Ms. Gibson.
That's correct, I don't have that this evening, we'll circle back, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. All right, so we were continuing the vote?
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Paige?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so very much. Six point zeros, excuse me, six point zero six received for action Board Travel and District Activity Requests, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am, good evening. I have a submission from Mrs. Dawn Page, a request to attend the V S B A Superintendent Evaluation Workshop, March second, and the cost of it is one hundred and seventy-five dollars. I have a submission to attend by Mrs. Cheryl L. Burke to attend the Legislative Policy Virtual Conference, March twentieth through the twenty-second, and the cost of it is free. I have a submission of District Activity Request Funds from Mrs. Cheryl L. Burke for Beulah Elementary School for their Black History Program, and she is requesting three hundred dollars. Madam Chair?
That's all.
That's what I'm saying, right?
Um, it says
You.
The principal? I'll, I'll confirm with the information you sent me, but it said, but I'll, I'll confirm it.
You had me thinking that, look at my calendar. All right, well, thank you so very much, I'm glad you had the information. All right, may we get a motion, please, to receive those requests for professional development?
Madam Chair, I believe Dr. Harris
There's some questions?
Yeah, I believe, I believe Dr. Harris Mohammed would like to address the group. I think she has a couple
All right.
Couple things she would like to share.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I was gonna make the motion, but I wanted to ask, would you like for your request for the three hundred dollars to just remain three hundred dollars and not identify a school, or you?
I'm trying, what, what date was on there? What, did it say Bellev, it says Bellevue, or was it, it was for Bellevue? That's who it's for, it's not Beulah, it's Bellevue Elementary for their Black History Program. That's who that is.
You're right, I'm correct, you're right.
It's Bellevue, thank you, I needed that, yes.
I just wanted to make sure the motion was, was right and not Beulah and then another school, yes, ma'am.
Right, because that's just the field count, counting, I'm not going there. All right, so, thank you so much, it's Bellevue.
Sure.
Bellevue, thank you. All right, so now, if we can get a motion? Are there any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Certainly. I, I move that we accept the professional development and school requests from our school board colleagues.
Is there a second? Ms. Paige?
Second.
It's been moved and probably second to approve six point zero six Board Activities to include professional development and school support. Thank you. Now we're down to number seven, Board Business, receive a legislative update from Mr. Matthew Stanley.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I, I apologize, I believe we, we need a roll call of the
Mr. Young, I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
It's late at night.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm ready to, it's almost eleven o'clock, okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry about that. Mrs. Door?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Rizzi?
Yes.
Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Paige?
Yes.
And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all so very much, and thank you again, Mr. Young. All right, now we're ready for Mr. Matthew Stanley.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Ms. Gibson has requested opportunity to address the group.
I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to motion that we transfer the funds allocated towards school board meals from the current year budget to, to be divided among school board members for district fund use.
Would that fall under this for Board Action? Yeah, because no place else on here do we make motions, okay. Would you mind repeating that, please? And I need to find out. Hmm, I don't know why I thought earlier we had done something with, I already moved it. Ms. Door, do you recall that?
There was a lot of talk about moving funds around because we cut our meals budget, so I'm not sure there's a lot in there, but I don't
Yeah, because Ms. Wilson was taking it out of something else because we'd already done away with that. Ms. Gibson, would you give us an opportunity to to investigate first to see what the money's like, if to see if, if there's not a line item there for food? So, and this is, when we had to cut the budget beforehand, I remember Ms. Wilson, Andrew Wilson was using it from, I think her, a fund that she had. So would you give us the opportunity to look at that, please, and then we come back for the next meeting, we can follow up?
Yes, so, just one, one note, I just want to make sure it's clear that, as far as I know, in Robert's Rules of Orders, you're able to make a motion at any time, so just
Right.
if there's, we don't necessarily have to make a motion just during the Board Action Items. Anyone can make a motion at any point during the meeting, so I just want to make sure that is clear.
I was looking at my gen, excuse me. I was looking at my agenda for new business, that's why I was looking on that page, so we really could put this on the new business. But, thank you so much for that. And just give me the opportunity to look into that, and then I'll bring that back. So I kept looking, I said, well, this is going to new business, but just, let's give me an opportunity to find out if we have any money, a line item there.
Thank you.
And, thank you, thank you. All right, now can we move on? Mr. Matthew Stanley, I've introduced you three times.
Madam Chair, may I just say a couple of words of introduction first?
Please.
So, Matthew has all the details, but we're thrilled that the, the final budget that was passed by the General Assembly actually is going to be sending more money to RPS than we originally anticipated. Actually, about eight million more. And that is obviously very exciting. So one thing I did want you to know is, we're still sifting through the details on all of that. There's a lot of different strings attached to various funding pieces, so we're not in a position tonight to say if those funds could be used for X or Y or Z, with, with one caveat. And that is, we will be recommending to the Board, when our budget does come back to the Board for final adoption, that we increase our two percent raise to a three percent raise. And that would bring our, our two-year total to five percent, which is what is called for in the final budget that was passed. So, as you know, we approved the two percent, we're going to be recommending that we increase that to three percent. The funds that we are receiving will be able to cover that. The rest is a little bit TBD, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. Cameras.
Thank you, Superintendent Cameras. Good evening, Madam Chair Burke, Vice Chair Young, and Board Members. I am very pleased tonight to share some good news out of the General Assembly Session that concluded late in the evening over the weekend. Before I do that and tell you those updates, I would like to take a quick moment and really just express a thank you, a huge thank you to everyone who advocated this year during the General Assembly Session. I know that we have had families, we have had staff yourselves, we've had many different people advocating and making their voice heard with the General Assembly, and it is because of that that education has been one of the big priorities that the General Assembly has addressed this year with the limited funding they have during the ongoing economic impacts brought on by the COVID nineteen. I also want to specifically thank several of the advocacy partners. They have done a tremendous job this year advocating advocates virtually. And I would like to name a few of them, the Virginia Education Association, the Fund Our Schools Organization, the Virginia PTA, the Virginia School Boards Association, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the Virginia Council of Administrators of Special Education. Every single one of these groups has been providing regular updates publicly and with other lobbyists and legislative liaisons during session. And it is really a team effort that we all come at education policy and funding while the General Assembly is in town. And then finally, I just have to give a huge shout out to our legislators that represent the city of Richmond. They have all gone above and beyond in their advocacy for the district and for our students, and so I just want to give a huge shout out to all of them as well. We are so appreciative for their representation of the city of Richmond and our RPS community. So with that, I do want to tell you a little bit about the budget that was approved by the General Assembly this weekend. Attached to Board Docs, there is a presentation from the House Appropriations Committee, as well as some of the initial K twelve distribution tables that show how much additional funding every locality might receive. I do want to give you a note of caution, as Superintendent Cameras already indicated. While there are definitely a lot of positive impacts, we will not be able to accurately forecast the actual distributions until the Department of Education releases some calculation tables which help us come with, come up with more concrete numbers and know exactly what our matching requirements would be. The budget is also not completely final until the General Assembly reacts to any amendments or any line item vetoes that the Governor may propose in the coming weeks. They will reconvene in early April to consider those and make the budget final. So there is still a bit longer period where, where things will be settling down, and we will understand any further developments that may occur as the Governor reviews the budget. Now, if you recall from my last presentation to you regarding the differences between the House and the Senate budgets, what our call to action or takeaway was from that moment was that there's a lot of good things in both budgets, and we hope that the General Assembly will essentially take the best of both and combine them together into a final budget, and that is what they did. So that is very exciting, that almost all of the funding that was unallotted last year after the General Assembly Session because of COVID nineteen and the economic impacts, a lot of that funding was taken away. They have restored all of it except for about four million dollars. So, we have very much come back towards better funding our schools. And, and I do want to note that, that while they did restore a lot of that money, not all the funding was for the same things they took away last year. One example that I'll share is that last year they unallotted money for the Aggressed Add-on Program. And instead of putting money back into that program this year, they addressed another equity-based funding stream. So that brings me to the first thing that I'll share with you, and that for this current fiscal year for FY twenty-one, they have approved a significant amount of COVID relief to address learning loss as well as infrastructure and operations. The learning loss will actually be a per pupil payment for every free lunch eligible student that a district has. So as you know, Richmond is community eligibility provision for free lunch eligible students, so presumably we are receiving an additional per pupil allocation for all of our students. And that is money that the General Assembly is allowing to be carried over into FY twenty-two, so there is no rush to decide what we want to do with that money, we do have flexibility with it. For FY twenty-two, the, the biggest thing, as Jason has already indicated, is a compensation raise. So the General Assembly is, has authorized a five percent raise over the biennium. And so, per his recommendation to you tonight, it sounds like we will be able to fully maximize that five percent raise that the, the state has passed. In the next fiscal year, there's also additional money for remediation and recovery from COVID nineteen in the form of grants that we would apply for VDOE. One of the, another big proposal was the passage of one of the SOQ recommendations from the Board of Education to provide more specialized support staff in our schools. So legislation passed from Senator McClellan that will require a ratio of at least three to a thousand students for specialized support positions, including psychologists, social workers, school nurses, and behavior analysts. From what I understand, RPS is already staffing these positions at higher than that ratio, so this is great news that we will bring down further funding from the state to potentially allow us to further increase the number of those positions that we have in our schools. One thing that you will not necessarily see in any current distribution tables is that school counselors will now be funded at the ratio of one to three hundred and twenty-five. This has been an issue that we've been following for a couple years now. The General Assembly had some back and forth with the Governor over passing legislation and then not funding it. And so now it is finally funded for FY twenty-two, and we'll have that ratio for school counselors going into effect. There is also a wonderful provision that the General Assembly has put in, allowing for an additional year of high school for older-aged exceptional education students. We know, the General Assembly has recognized that the pandemic has been incredibly hard on our exceptional education students, and, and this will be another support for them as they're trying to complete their education. The General Assembly also made several advances on childcare. There is sixty-two million dollars for expanded childcare subsidies. The, from what I understand, the eligibility for childcare subsidies will be expanded, so more families will be supported by those to go use the childcare providers of their choice. There are restorations in the BPI per pupil allocation. One of the unallotments last year was stripping about, I think it was eleven percent of funding from those per pupil allocations from BPI, and that has been restored. And then there's also an initiative that was unallotted last year that was restored, is a five million dollar initiative to recruit and retain early childhood educators. So those are some of the highlights. There are, of course, other things. There is other legislation that the General Assembly has passed this year that we will be further updating you on in the coming weeks. As far as next steps, first of all, stay tuned for further updates on how much additional funding specifically we do estimate to receive. Obviously, we are also anticipating the passage of a federal stimulus bill. And so I know that all of these will continue to, to require the Board to adapt and, and and, and look at how we'll be budgeting for those different funding streams moving forward. I encourage you, if there is anything specifically that, that you feel should continue to be amended, be it in the budget or any legislation, now is the time when the Governor is considering all the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly. He has about a month to make recommendations on bills. He can approve them, he can veto them, or he can recommend amendments to them. And when the General Assembly reconvenes in early April, they will consider all of those amendments, and then we will know the final disposition of all legislation and the budget. And then finally, one, one key takeaway from tonight that I encourage everyone to do is please send a thank you note to your legislator and express our gratitude for them continuing to invest in public education and supporting our schools. So with that, Chairon Burke, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley, so much. Anyone has any questions? Mr. Young?
Not as of yet, Madam Chair. Not as of yet, Madam Chair.
May I just thank Mr. Stanley and the Richmond delegation for their incredible work on our behalf. We have, we are blessed with fierce advocates. Senator McClellan, Senator Hoshmi, Delegate McQuinn, Delegate Born, Delegate Carr, Delegate Bagby. Did I miss anyone? Matthew?
Adams and Senator Morrissey.
Delegate Adams and Senator Morrissey, thank you, who have fought for Richmond, and, and we appreciate it. And, and it's not just this year. It's been going on for, for many years, and it's really beginning to bear fruit, so thank you.